I'd like to call this study session of Lakewood City Council for Monday, July 22 to order. The first item of business is an update on the Gravely Lake Drive to Thorn Lake Connector Road project. For this, we have Mr. Bill Elliott from WashDOT and Les Denot from Public Works.
So I'll just give a brief intro of Bill and then go over through the presentation. This is Mr. Bill Elliott with WashDOT. He's the project manager for the Lightning Project, presentation of I-5. He has a very thorough presentation, C D Mont, Gravely, Thorn Connector.
Great, thanks, Les. Thanks for having me to be here. And provide you an update on the status of the Gravely-Thorn Connector. So I've got some graphics that I think will help explain it. You've got a handout that has most of them in there. Welcome questions at any point. I want to provide a little context upfront for the broader corridor improvements, and then we'll jump into specifics on the Gravely-Thorn Connector. We are delivering the improvements on the I-5 corridor through JBLM through four stages of construction. The first stage was built down the south end of the corridor in the Dupont area. That was complete in 2017. The second stage, as you know, I'm sure very well, is actively under construction, emphasis on active, at Thorn and Berkeley, all the way up to Gravely Lake Drive. The third stage will be back down the south end, in the Dupont area, primarily rebuilding the Exit 119 interchange at Silicon-Dupont Road. And then the fourth stage will include a shared-use path between Silicon-Dupont Road and Berkeley Street, and then the Gravely-Thorn Connector, which is our focus this evening. So we completed an environmental assessment.
I have a question about that. I was just talking with some leadership at JBLM, who isn't too enthralled with the idea of bike path winding its way through there. We didn't ask for it. I know very directly that this was the brainchild and desire of a former director of your department, who said, after staff had designed something without it, no, it's got to have this through there. I've heard from bicyclists that this isn't really the path that they'd take, and it also creates kind of a vacuumed area through there that invites all sorts of undesirable behavior. What's the chance of dropping the millions of dollars that it takes to build something nobody asked for and people don't seem to want and enhancing this Silicon, our connector road here? Something people have asked for and always wanted.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly speak to the first part, the last part there about enhancing this, oh, enhancing Silicon-Dupont Road.
Well, the connector.
Oh, the connector.
It keeps shrinking, and we've got millions going to a bike path that nobody wants.
Gotcha. So I'll speak tonight to the evolution of the scope on the Gravely-Thorn Connector, which is not really a financial driver or not driven by financial considerations. We are aware of the concerns by JBLM regarding the proposed path between Berkeley and Silicon-Dupont Road. Met recently with Chief of Staff Tom Knight, Steve Perrin, et cetera. So we're aware of those concerns. We're going to be working with JBLM on that. I couldn't predict right now what that outcome will be, but we'll be listening to that. We are aware of the concerns about the isolation of the path. There are some advocates for it in the non-motorized community, but we appreciate those concerns also. So the Gravely-Thorn Connector was included in the environmental assessment that we completed in May 2017. This is a page from that document. And in the upper left, it shows the proposed scope at that time. And we'll touch on that and the evolution of the scope for the Gravely-Thorn Connector and the reasoning behind that. So a little look at schedule. This is for our overall corridor program, but I'll bring it to focus on the Gravely-Thorn Connector. The green bar up toward the top labeled Connecting Washington Funding is the legislatively approved funding stream. Over a 10-year period from 2015 through 2025, we built a program consistent with that funding stream. Again, the Stage 1, Stage 2 projects are well underway. That's where we are now, in mid-2019. We're one year into the design-build contract for the Stage 2 project, which includes the Thorn and Berkeley interchanges. We are actively working on the Stage 3 project back down the south end. We're a little bit more than halfway through the environmental process for that. When that's done, we'll acquire property rights permitting design-build procurement. The yellow bar showing design-build contract for the south end, which will immediately follow completion of the Stage 2 contract. And then the Stage 4 contract, Gravely-Thorn Connector and the shared-use path between Berkeley and Silicon-Dupont Road. I want to show some early history. Let me back up a second. The little dash line off to the left is technically before we had formally established the Stage 4 contract as a standalone. But there were some key events prior to that that really tied into the NEPA work up above that I want to touch on tonight because they were really fundamental or important to, foundational is the right word, to the evolution of the Gravely-Thorn Connector. In September 2015, we held a community meeting for the Silicon and Woodbrook neighborhoods. Gravely-Thorn Connector was certainly part of that discussion with a lot of community input. October of 2015, we met with membership of the Tacoma Country and Golf Club, focused on the Gravely-Thorn Connector. Then we went forward, developing the design with interaction with the Country and Golf Club, Sound Transit, and the City of Lakewood. That tied into the completion of the NEPA document. We've since prepared a compatibility report, which was a requirement of Sound Transit. That is complete and approved. I'll touch on that in a minute. We are now advancing the definition and the design and the footprint for the Gravely-Thorn Connector so that we can advance the right-of-way plans and acquire the property rights we need to build it. Next two bars show the acquisition of the property rights. The top one there, which will be a lease from Sound Transit for the Gravely-Thorn Connector, and then below that, easements from JBLM and Sound Transit for the other shared-use path when those are complete construction in the 2022 to 2024 timeframe. Okay, these are a couple shots out of the compatibility report we prepared for Sound Transit for the Gravely-Thorn Connector. They tasked us to compare our proposed Gravely-Thorn Connector, which will roughly use 25% of the Sound Transit Railroad right-of-way, with the potential future use of that corridor by Sound Transit. Not intending to go through all the detail of that document, although I welcome questions. We did, there's currently a single railroad track in the corridor. We looked at scenarios where there would potentially be two, three, or even four railroad tracks in that corridor, and demonstrated that even if it went as high as four tracks, which Sound Transit has no concept of doing, that was compatible with the proposed Gravely-Thorn Connector, Sound Transit signed off on that document. So that's a key milestone in the evolution. So in the Stage 2 project, which is being delivered through design-build, we have a tool in design-build called, yes?
Mr. Brans, Senator.
When you say that it's compatible, it's compatible with, it's not compatible with the originally designed Gravely-Thorn Connector that was a motorized element and a non-motorized element. It's not compatible.
No, actually, the configuration of the Gravely-Thorn Connector that we took through the compatibility report is exactly what was in the environmental assessment, which included the single motor vehicle lane southbound from Gravely to Thorn and the shared-use path.
So it is compatible with a motor vehicle?
It is. That's correct. Right. Okay, so as part of our design-build process, we provide the opportunity to proposers, who are competing for the project, to prepare what's called alternative technical concepts, which is basically a revised design. And that's part of their competition to get the project and really in the public interest. Atkinson Construction, who ended up getting the project, Stage 2 that's under construction, prepared a number of alternative technical concepts, one of which is relevant to the Gravely-Thorn Connector, although it did not specifically address the Gravely-Thorn Connector. But let me explain to you why. Their alternative technical concept really redesigned the Thorn and Berkeley interchanges, along with the I-5 mainline, all the way from Gravely Lake Drive down to the Main Gate interchange, for that matter. It was a very large magnitude alternative technical concept. It was well over half of the cost of the project. It addressed well over half the cost of the Stage 2 project. It had a number of scope elements in it, one of which was, as circled in red and with the red arrow, adding a southbound auxiliary lane to I-5 between Gravely Lake Drive and Thorn Lane. That was not in our original concept plan that we advertised in the request for proposals. This alternative technical concept did get approved and became part of their contract, and they are now currently building it. And I'll explain how this is relevant to the Gravely-Thorn Connector. Point of emphasis, the Gravely-Thorn Connector is not part of their contract out there. It's in the later Stage 4. I'm not sure they were even aware of the Gravely-Thorn Connector when they were competing for it. Okay, this is a different view of that. On the left is the Berkeley interchange, in the middle is the Thorn interchange, and on the right side is Gravely Lake Drive. So I labeled there where the new proposed southbound auxiliary lane was in their alternative technical concept currently in their project they're building. So on the upper right there is the design or the scope for the Gravely-Thorn Connector that existed at that time, which is the single motor vehicle lane southbound and the shared-use path. So once the ATC got approved with the auxiliary lane, we got thinking about whether the motor vehicle lane on the Gravely-Thorn Connector was really a cost-effective use of public funding, given we just got a new auxiliary lane on southbound I-5 that would really address the same traffic demand between interchanges, in this case between Gravely-Thorn and potentially Berkeley. So that brought that into question. Let me show you some traffic volumes that were included in the May 2017 environmental assessment for the Gravely-Thorn Connector. We used two years for evaluation purposes in the environmental assessment. One's called the projected opening year. In this case, that was 2020. Remember, this data, the document was approved in May of 2017. The data was actually analyzed in the 2015 to 2016 timeframe. So the year of opening that we were using for our analysis was 2020. I appreciate our schedule is a little bit behind that now, but that was the projected year of opening for modeling purposes. We then used what we call Design Horizon Year, which was 2040. So for 2020 on the Gravely-Thorn Connector, in the AM peak hour, our traffic analysis forecast was that 25 vehicles would use the Gravely-Thorn Connector in that hour. A very low volume of traffic. In the PM peak hour, a little higher, 75 vehicles in that peak hour. Still a pretty low volume of vehicles. Then we looked at 2040, which is our Design Horizon Year. Again, AM peak hour, up to 40 vehicles. That is still a very low number of vehicles for the probable cost of the facility. And then the PM peak, it actually spiked up to 240, which is still not even remotely a high number for a public roadway. It jumped up to 240 because our overall traffic forecast for the corridor indicated that by 2040, the southbound mainline is expected to be pretty congested with demand as we know it now and regional growth. And the 240 represents diversion, if you will, or people that would prefer to use the local road than I-5. So considering these volumes that were in our original analysis for the Gravely-Thorn Connector and the, if you will, new auxiliary lane on I-5 that we got as a result of the Stage 2 project's alternative technical concept, we looked at that motor vehicle lane and together with stakeholders, made a decision that we think the motor vehicle lane on the Gravely-Thorn Connector is not a cost-effective investment. The other, yes?
Does the southbound auxiliary lane originate at Gravely Lake Drive?
Correct. Yes.
So would it be a right turn lane off of Gravely Lake Drive?
So I've got some graphics details I can show you. Basically, today's on-ramp from Gravely Lake Drive southbound merges into the outer I-5 through lane. With the auxiliary lane, it'll be what we call an add lane. So it won't merge directly, and it'll be an additional lane that starts at Gravely and then exits at Thorn. And if you wanted to continue south on I-5, when you entered from Gravely Lake Drive, you would shift over one lane to be in the outer through lane southbound. Okay, so the other thing we get out of this process and dropping the motor vehicle lane is we were previously estimating a four-foot need of right-of-way on the Tacoma Country and Golf Club. And with dropping the motor vehicle lane, we no longer need that width. So the permanent property right that we now believe we need for the Gravely-Thorn Connector is limited to Sound Transit property. No permanent property right needed from the Tacoma Country and Golf Club. Okay, this graphic shows a typical, or if you will, representative cross-section of the Gravely-Thorn Connector with our revised design. The single track is in the center of the typically 100-foot-wide Sound Transit right-of-way. We're showing use of the, I'll call it here, western 25 feet of the Sound Transit right-of-way, a 14-foot-wide shared-use path for bicycles and pedestrians based on interaction with city staff and with West Pierce Fire. That width would also be adequate for an emergency vehicle, should that be necessary. Barrier and fence between the path and the railroad. On the left side of the path, we're showing a seven-foot width between the edge of the path. The red vertical line is the property boundary between Sound Transit and the Country and Golf Club. That seven-foot offset is really to try and provide some separation for the Douglas fir trees that are along the property boundary on the left side. We'll bring some attention to those in a minute. Those trees are on the Tacoma Country and Golf Club property. And that's the highlights there. This shows the allowed width for an emergency vehicle that could be either to provide support for someone on the path, if necessary, or if for some reason, southbound I-5 was just blocked and West Pierce Fire was unable to get to Silicon, they could pull bollards at the Gravely Lake Drive end of the Gravely-Thorn Connector and use the path to get down to Silicon. Okay, there we go. Okay, so overall view of the connector here, Thorn Lane on the left, Gravely Lake Drive on the right. Some things I want to touch on through the presentation here. We've interacted quite a lot with Sound Transit on this proposal over the last few years. The property right that Sound Transit is willing to entertain for this is a long-term lease. Not a fee, not an easement, but a long-term lease. Also want to touch on the intent that the City of Lakewood would take on operation and maintenance responsibility for this local connection between Gravely Lake Drive and Thorn Lane. Want to bring some attention and some upcoming graphics on the boundary area between the Gravely-Thorn Connector and the Tacoma Country and Golf Club. We've interacted quite a lot with leadership from the Country and Golf Club. They have some concerns about the facility. And then finally, safety features along the path. I'm going to zoom in on some areas so we can get a little bit of closer view. We'll start at the left or Thorn Lane end. So upper left there is Thorn Lane. The black line is the proposed path. The first portion of the Sound Transit right-of-way down toward Thorn is actually a bit wider, at 150 feet wide. This is, I'm going to show you a cross-section at that point right there, as shown here. In this wider section at 150 feet wide, we would propose the path be a little bit further away from the tracks to get some separation from the trains. Not all the way out to the property boundary. There are a number of trees out there. The placement, as shown, would minimize the removal of trees, but also provide some separation from the trains. As we move north along the corridor, now we get into the 100-foot-wide section that's more typical along here. We'll look at that location. And again, this becomes more typical of the cross-section. A 25-foot offset from the centerline of track to the edge of the retaining wall. And you're all probably kind of familiar. The railroad track through here gradually depresses, gets lower as you go toward Gravely Lake Drive, and then goes underneath Gravely Lake Drive. So as we move north, you'll see the track gradually get lower than the path. Next one is pretty similar, although again, you see the train get lower or the path get higher, if you will, with a bit higher retaining wall. Our intent here is to keep the path up basically at the level of the tree roots. So we're minimizing excavation into those tree roots that would damage or harm those trees. Last one, we're almost up to Gravely Lake Drive here. This is the highest one with a 12-foot-high retaining wall. Okay, and then we'll move on. And the next one is upright along Gravely Lake Drive. So the two vehicles on the right there are actually on Gravely Lake Drive, heading toward I-5. This shows the opportunity for a sidewalk along. There is no sidewalk currently on that portion of Gravely Lake Drive, heading toward I-5, that we could provide a sidewalk. And then down below it, to the left, is the initial portion of the Gravely-Thorn Connector as it heads toward the railroad right-of-way and then down toward Thorn Lane. Okay, and then this is a planned view of that last section, where it would go all the way up to the existing crosswalk at the intersection with Pacific Highway. And that would be on public right-of-way through there. It's tight, but it would be on public right-of-way. Okay, I want to bring your attention to the northern portion of the Gravely-Thorn Connector. It's, well, the northern 60%, actually, about 3,500 feet. I'll zoom in. It's a little hard to see, but there's a blue line along here for the retaining walls. So, move forward. That's an aerial photo with the Country and Golf Club to the left, I-5 in the middle. You can see the railroad track. There's a substantial row of Douglas fir trees, as I mentioned earlier, along the boundary line with the Tacoma Country and Golf Club. They're predominantly on the Country and Golf Club property. That's just a photo from I-5 as you look over there. So we've had an arborist out on the site and evaluated the trees. This graphic here represents the portion where there's a single retaining wall. It's about a 3,000-foot length. Within that 3,000 feet, there are about 239 Douglas fir trees over there that are, as shown here, again, the red vertical line is the property boundary between the Sound Transit right-of-way and the Country and Golf Club. The trees are just onto the Country and Golf Club. 239 trees in this range. The table in the upper right shows the arborist's assessment of those trees as they stand today. It ranges from good to quite a few more fair, some poor, one dead, actually. And then the far-right column is the consideration of, while we're providing a seven-foot separation, if you will, from the property line and the trees to the edge of the path work, our proposal would still be within the critical root zone of the trees. So the arborist provided a preliminary assessment of what risk that might put the trees at. And in his assessment, I think it's somewhat conservative, but that we could be putting the tree, as many as 220 of those trees, at some risk with construction of the path. So that is a concern. This section here is the northernmost portion. This is only about 400 feet long, where there are two walls, one on each side because the path gets higher to connect into Gravely Lake Drive. Only 28 trees in this section. You can see the condition up there in the table, 24 of which would have more than 30% of their critical root zone within the limits of the proposed path. So that is a concern of ours. It's certainly a concern of the Country and Golf Clubs and an item for additional attention. Okay, so again, things I wanted to touch on. The long-term lease from Sound Transit. We need to establish the specifics in detail of our property right needs so that we can advance that discussion with Sound Transit. I think the key thing at this point is really coming to terms with that boundary area there. The seven feet, if you will, on the left side of the path as relevant to the trees and the risk issue of will the path potentially have an adverse effect on the trees and whether we need to do anything about the trees as part of the project. The City of Lakewood's, or our intent, our goal, the City of Lakewood would take on an operation and maintenance responsibility. We're working closely with Public Works staff on that. Again, the boundary area with the Tacoma Country and Golf Club, as I mentioned earlier. This graphic does not show a fence or barrier on that side. It shows the existing fence on the left side of the trees, which belongs to Country and Golf Club. The project would build an additional fence. That location of that's not shown here. It's to be defined. We're ramping up a design working group, including city staff, WashDOT, Tacoma Country and Golf Club representatives, and we'll be looking at those type of features. We do show that shrubbery there in that seven-foot zone is intended to be a feature that would discourage, how should I say, inappropriate uses of the path area other than people that are transiting it on bikes or pedestrians. And then safety features, again. Vegetation to discourage unintended or inappropriate uses. Pedestrian lighting, call boxes, fences to protect users from the railroad and adjacent property, et cetera. So that is pretty much a quick overview. Back to the schedule. Our critical path is to get that footprint locked in so we can define the property need and advance the lease discussions with Sound Transit and work out there toward construction starting in the 2022 timeframe. starting in a 2022 timeframe.
So, looking at, it looks like the additional auxiliary lane would be one where when you come down southbound to Berkeley, excuse me, Thorn Lane, you would have to go over the, you would go over and overpass to get into Tillicum, but the connector would be essentially at ground level inside, on the west side of the tracks. So, you would go into Tillicum without, without going on to the new structure.
Correct, yeah. The Gravely-Thorn Connector for the bikes and pets would be on the Country Golf Club side of the tracks, would connect into Thorn Lane, kind of where Union makes the turn to go up Thorn. Exactly, right.
But with the reconfiguration, you wouldn't have to go on to any of the new structure in all likelihood.
That's correct.
Exit right onto Thorn Lane.
That's correct.
Any questions? Mr. Bulkey?
So, it ends right there at Thorn?
Correct.
Okay. And ideally, it would attach into something that we would build on Union.
So, our overall, let me scroll forward. I think I have an extra slide here. Let me go forward a couple more slides. There, oh, there we go. So, another graphic from our environmental assessment. This shows our intended non-motorized facilities along the entire corridor. Section one in the upper right is the Gravely-Thorn Connector. And then in the Tillicum neighborhood, our proposal is that bikes and pedestrians would use existing facilities through Tillicum, bike lanes, sidewalks, to get across the Tillicum neighborhood. And then at 122, to connect into that additional shared-use path that we're proposing as part of our Stage Four contract discussed earlier, to make their way down through that, what's labeled Section Three here, down to the exit 119 vicinity in Dupont. And then similar to Tillicum in Dupont, onto existing local street sidewalks, bike lanes, to get down to the south end of the corridor at 118.
So, the lane, the new lane on, that was proposed now, or that's going to happen, from the contractor. You get in, on it on Gravely, you don't have to move, you don't have to merge, you just stay right on it. Does it go all the way to Berkeley or does it stop at Thorn?
So, let me back up a little bit. Okay, well, this answers part of your question. So, this is from the ATC document. This is I-5 as it comes down to Thorn. Really hard to see what's on the right there. It's quite small. The blow-up on the upper-left there shows the southbound main line with the four through lanes that today stop at Thorn, but will continue through Thorn and beyond after the current contract. And then there'll, there'll be a two-lane off-ramp configuration at Thorn. The outer lane there on the far-left of that circle is the auxiliary lane that comes on from Gravely. So, if you entered at Gravely and you wanted to go to either Thorn or Berkeley, you'd stay in that outer lane. When you took the off-ramp, if you wanted to go to Berkeley, you'd stay in the right lane. If you want to go to Thorn, once you took the off-ramp, you'd shift into the left lane to cross the low bridge that just got girders set on it to get into either Tillicum or Woodbrook. And let me show you, this is a plan sheet of the Thorn interchange that's being built. Y'all are probably familiar, the new configuration will have two bridges, a low bridge and a high bridge. The low bridge is the one that just got the girders set a couple weeks ago, right next to the existing bridge. That's the one shown on the right here. That'll provide a connection across I-5, either directly into Murray Road in Woodbrook or through that roundabout back over I-5 on what we call the high bridge. I call it the high bridge because that'll be great separated over the railroad, just like the one that is being built down at Berkeley.
Okay, okay, so, let me see if I understand. I get in on Gravely and now let's say I want to go to Woodbrook.
Yes.
I'm going to move over one lane.
Yes.
Or I'll head down a little ways on that, move over on one lane, go up on the low bridge, come up, well, it doesn't matter. If I want to go to Woodbrook or to Tillicum, I've got to get off on...
The low bridge.
On the low bridge.
That's correct.
Go across around, or I see, okay.
Yep, if you want to go to Tillicum, you go back over the top, and Woodbrook, you just go left.
So, if I'm going to Berkeley to let's say go to the hospital?
Yep, you would stay in the right lane.
Right.
You would stay in the right lane, you go past the low bridge, you go underneath the high bridge, and then you continue on down parallel to I-5 in what we call a collective distributor. The only difference there is it's barrier separated from the main line. Whereas the new, the auxiliary lane between Gravely and Thorn will only be striped separated. There'll be no barrier up there. Inherent in this design between Thorn and Berkeley is it'll be barrier separated. So, once you pass in that ramp lane, if you will, the Thorn interchange, you can't enter the I-5 main line until you were past Berkeley. So, if you wanted to go to Berkeley, you'll just go down to the Berkeley interchange, come up to the signal and go right to Tillicum or left to JBL. The, the bottom one here, the bottom one is the current design. It's labeled approved ATC here, shows the segment between Gravely Lake Drive and Thorn in a little bit more detail. You can, in red, I labeled the auxiliary lane that was in the ATC I've been discussing. That's where you can see where you'd come on from Gravely. In, in the top view is what's out there today, where the southbound on-ramp from Gravely just merges into the outer main line lane. And then, of course, that outer main line lane ends at Thorn, right? It will be called drops to Thorn today. In the bottom, which is today's design, that fourth lane will continue south underneath the new Thorn Bridge, et cetera. That auxiliary lane, as we just talked through, will exit to Thorn. And then you can see it's somewhat small on the, on the left there. The, the two red arrows would show continuing toward Berkeley. And then there's a left turn arrow if you wanted to cross the low bridge to go to either Woodbrook, the logistics gate, or cross back over to Tillicum.
I'm, I'm thinking there's some signing challenge.
Absolutely. So, we, we knew when this got proposed...
You're going to say Woodbrook, Woodbrook-Tilllicum, and then you're going to say Berkeley, or you're going to say Woodbrook-Tilllicum-Thorn? And then on the other side, you're going to tell them Berkeley-Madigan?
Yeah, there's going to be a robust overhead signing for this with, with good driver lane direction.
Mr. Ransener?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my concern is when we were trying to propose and, and had been brought to the community a real need for a Gravely-Thorn Connector road, you know, we were being responsive not to an issue about traffic volume, which is how you've analyzed whether it's needed. But the concerns of the community about that they get, first of all, that they, they were, they were isolated. They were stuck to being able, the only options were to use the interchanges to get on and off. And particularly when they were coming to Tillicum, they were subject to being, even though there were relative, there was a lane that was going to be, the only thing you could do in it was exit at Thorn Lane, that the issue was you got caught in the congestion because when, when, when I-5 got congested, everybody shifted, a lot of people shifted over so that that lane became filled. And thus, you did spend 20 minutes going from Gravely Lake to Thorn because it was part of I-5, even though most of the vehicles in that lane weren't trying to get to Thorn. They were trying to get some advantage of what... So, folks in the community are going to see this as perpetuating that, that there is nothing that keeps through traffic when there is a lot of traffic from going over and blocking that auxiliary lane or of congesting it to be able to go and do that. And so, they're going to be, so yes, there are, at least we'll now have non-motorized thing and there is some, there's, now is a pathway for, for emergency vehicles. But the general community is going to see this as perpetuating the same problem that they have been advocating to get a solution for, to be able to go and do that. And so, you know, you know, I would, would not expect, you know, this is not going to be viewed as a real positive thing because the concern was never how many traffic, rows of traffic were going to go there and whether it was the 40 or the 120 or being able to go and do that. You know, so, the, the community, now, your slide said that this particular project, the Gravely-Thorn Connector, that is only the non-motorized piece, is going to be a design bid build, not a design build.
That's our current intent.
So, so, once we got this down, it is going to change again with a contractor with a great idea.
So, if we stay the course on designed bid-build contracting method, obviously, we then prescribe, we do the design upfront, and that prescribes and pretty much locks into design. There, there is some advocacy out there and some consideration of doing design build. One of the advantages is speed. You can see that taking place out there today. It, it does bring with it the potential for variation, but right now, the intent is designed bid-build, yes.
Okay. So, along the non-motorized path, what is the, you, you mentioned pedestrian lighting. What's the envisioned interval and the height? And how is that lighting going to affect particularly close to Gravely Lake of where there are residences, right?
So, all...
Right, you know, sort of on, on the, on the country club side of...
Right, right. So, all to be defined, typically pedestrian lighting is fairly low, not, not luminaire high. It would be potentially three to five feet maximum height. It's for, it's for pedestrian high height feature. So, it would not have spillover beyond the facility itself. Spacing completely to be defined, yeah.
Three to five feet? I mean, that, I mean, it's below eye level.
So, frequently pedestrian, frequently in this configuration, pedestrian lighting would be embedded in the barrier to, to illuminate the path level. But all to be defined, yeah.
I'm trying to think of where I've ever seen an example of that, of where pedestrian lighting is designed to kind of show where you're going to walk rather than provide a security comfort.
Hotel and resorts. How you find your way out to the beach, the swimming pool.
And then the, Sound Transit wants a long-term lease with Washdott or with the City of Lakewood, since the City of Lakewood is going to have operations and maintenance responsibility for the road?
So, the, the process, as I understand it, I have not done one lease before, is that the, the lease will be established between Sound Transit and Washdott, and then the lease would be assigned to the City of Lakewood. Exactly how that mechanism works, I haven't been part of one before, and we'll be working through it.
And, and so, what's the, so what's the fiscal estimate considerations about the city taking on operations and maintenance of the road, you know? You know, is, 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 is opposed to it remaining a Washdott asset? Or, or is there going to be some Washdott contribution to operations and maintenance, even though we're going to do the work and the planning?
The intent is that'll be part of a turnback agreement between Washdott and the city that we haven't even initiated yet. So, I don't have any numbers to support that at this time. So...
Okay, and I, I guess my... My last question is... When is this concept going to be proposed to the Tillicum community? That they're...
Yeah, we, that's a good, great question. We do not have a scheduled meeting with the Tillicum community at this time to go over this. It's probably something we need to get on the calendar.
Because there, you know, the community is expecting there to be a road.
Right, right. Yeah, let me, can I touch on one aspect of your concern about the aux lane, the community expectations in I-5 traffic? Historically, for many years now, what we've all known on southbound I-5 within the weekday PM peak periods is the congestion, choke point is Thorn, because that's where I-5 goes from four lanes to three. It will not be that way in the after from the current contract. We'll be continuing the four lanes through as well as the improvement at Thorn and Berkeley. We are, our forecasts indicate that while we're not going to, we're not going to solve everything as part of this project, we will be shifting any southbound congestion point well south from this point as part of this corridor improvement, such that it will not be at Thorn.
Well, it, it seems to me that you're going from four to five and back to four right at Thorn.
That's correct.
And so, so you're, yeah, so you're still going to have, when there's a lot of congestion and people have shifted over, you're going to still end up with a, a, a choke point of some sort at Thorn.
Yeah, that fifth lane, which is the auxiliary lane between Gravely and Thorn, is quite brief in length. And I totally appreciate the, I'll call them the Q-jumper behavior that occurs along interstates when it's congested, and it occurs, it occurs at Thorn currently. Folks will use that outer lane, get off and get back on again. Those folks will realize the first time they do that, if they get off at the new Thorn, what they're going to end up at is a traffic signal at Berkeley because they have to go through the Berkeley interchange before they can get back on I-5 and another ramp meter down there. They're not going to want to do that. They'll do it once or twice and realize that doesn't work like it used to.
Well, I, I guess the, the, what happens now is relatively few of those vehicles go up the exit to Thorn and come back down to I-5. They, they slow down, almost stop and try to merge back to the left, and it slows up to, if not three lanes of traffic with that there. And you're, you're looking, seeing the same configuration, particularly as we get to future years of when even four lanes is going to be a lot of traffic on I-5. You know, you have, you have, you have a mile where there's five, five lanes. People are going to use five lane to do that. And I, I guess that the, although it wasn't part of your presentation today, the, the northbound Gravely-Thorn Connector element is an auxiliary lane.
Correct.
Northbound on the other side, that's, that's, that's moved to, to do that. Well, thank you, but I would, again, I would ask that you schedule, even if it's only for informational purposes and not in a timeframe of where you're going to be able to make any changes with the community, I'd just rather you be the messenger than, than I. So, well, the meeting that I was at, they, they explained how the interchange was going to work.
Yeah.
But they didn't explain that there wasn't going to be a motorized roadway from Gravely Lake.
Right.
Back, back to Thorn.
Good point. Mr. Simpson?
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Elliott. I just want to spitball here for a minute, building off of my colleague's comment about a motorized connection between Gravely Lake and Thorn whereby the citizens who live in the Tillicum neighborhood feel connected to the city. Let's say after that public hearing, you hear in very clear words, they want to be connected, which is to say they want a road. Can that be done? And is there room within your very well-designed plan, whereas I thought I heard the mayor saying, things can be moved around in order to facilitate something that the city needs as opposed to extending a non-motorized path further on toward... as opposed to extending a non-motorized path further on toward JBLM? Can it be done? And we're just spitballing here. I'm not looking for a hard answer, but can that be done? Because I realize we're talking about a lot of money here, a lot of time, a lot of effort, but can it be done?
So, it would be possible to revert to the configuration that went through the environmental assessment, which was a single motor vehicle lane southbound plus a bike ped path, which, that's not what's shown here, but that takes what's shown here plus approximately four foot width onto the country and golf club in permanent property right.
Or four feet into the Sound Transit easement that will, in all likelihood, never-
So-
Be used to the extent that-
So, Sound Transit staff have been absolutely adamant, they will not allow us closer than 25 feet from the central I have track. They will not accept any permanent feature closer than what's shown here. So, any, any additional width comes from the outside, which means country and golf club side.
And what, what's magic about that?
The 25-foot width?
Yeah.
So, Sound Transit staff conveyed safety. It also plays into our compatibility report and our assessment of their potential future use of the corridor. If we were to propose something less than 25 feet, I'm sure Sound Transit would require us to redo the compatibility report, and they were quite emphatic when we, our initial proposal was something less than that. I think it was about 20 feet offset, and their engineering staff was absolutely adamant they would not entertain the proposal.
And what was the rationale for that? They, you know, they've, they've been particularly uncooperative this whole-
They cited their engineering standards.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's also Burlington Northern has retained rights there, too. They, they paid for it, but they didn't get it, they didn't get the whole bundle of sticks, is my understanding.
So, my understanding is that when the, the property changed hands from Burlington Northern to Sound Transit in approximately 2006, Burlington Northern retained the right to make any future improvements that they wanted from boundary to boundary, which is one of the constraints that Sound Transit operates under. It's primarily what drives them to limiting our process to a lease.
So, they sold it, but they didn't get, but, yeah, they sold it, but they didn't give it, get, get anything for it. That's, that-
Someone else. That's what I get to do.
I get to live there anytime I want to. It's, it's a good deal if you can get it. I have a question just to explain to people because we know I'll come up and maybe you can help me answer, and where I'm going with this is, is the traffic modeling of truck traffic on the Thorn Lane interchange because what, in, in the, in the Woodbrook area, and we've rezoned a lot, there's industrial development, we've got a new half million dollar logistics center, half million square foot, excuse me, logistics center, that's going to be replicated across the street, moving the storage, the logistics gate, trucks cutting through to Spanaway. Truck traffic is only going to be intensified there. So, what I see if you're, if you're big rig, southbound on I-5, and you want to go to any of those locations, you come off, you stop, you make a hard left turn, and then from arcing count, arcing clockwise, you enter a, a roundabout and do a 270 arcing And that doesn't seem like the easiest maneuver. I used to drive a truck in my younger days, and we, we have some complaints about this, the size and navigability of the, the Lakewood roundabout at, at the logistics gate. How is this going to, what, I guess the, the, the traffic modeling thing is, people are going to look at this and how is that going to work?
Right. So, it certainly is a series of turns. It'll need to be well-signed. It's all being designed for a full-sized, what we call a WDB-67 truck to accommodate those turn movements. So, we believe it will function well and has been designed to suit those movements. The design builder is very aware of the warehouse development in the Woodbrook neighborhood and certainly the logistics gate that's been there lots longer, so we think it'll function well for truck traffic. But it is, I acknowledge it is a series of turns.
Yeah, it's, the first time is going to be hard to find a way in, but the, the arc is, is the concern, I think, that people are going to have when they're looking at it without having measurements and experience.
Could we, could we help and maybe provide you with a graphic or something that, that showed a truck tracking around it and showed the wheels that track here within the roadway or tracking up onto the trackable surface for, for the trailer?
Yeah, that, that would be helpful, yeah.
Whether you come up a left turn or, or a left turn, you're going southbound.
You, you come up, you're going to make a hard left turn, then you're going to-
Are you talking about-
Go right, go left.
The first left?
Yeah.
They're actually, that graphic is a, is a, is a touch old. The contractor actually had to skew the bridge slightly to accommodate that, that movement. So, they, they're addressing it and they're, they're skewing it to accommodate not quite a 90, maybe let's call it a 75-degree left turn for the, the large-
So, that's why it's saying, I, I saw the, I saw, I saw, I saw the constructions angle across as a, okay. That makes a lot of sense.
Oh, so you're like this?
Yes.
No pity, but poor smart car that's next to him.
A lot of concrete out there.
Any other questions? Thank you. It's been very informative.
Thanks for the opportunity.
I think our, our, our ask is please get to the telecom folks as soon as possible.
You bet.
Thanks. We now move to a review of the second quarter police report. Chief Zarro.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and some council members. It is that time again for the fourth quarter, or, excuse me, the second quarter report. Few things that are, you know, relatively unchanged and stable, but some other things that I'd like to highlight. You know, you can see we have our standard calls for service and, you know, some reductions in both of those, or all of those. And then we have this slide that, you know, we usually present about different types of calls in different districts. One of the things I wanted to talk about was, you know, in presentations past, I have given sort of anecdotal descriptions of what a suspicious vehicle might be, but I actually responded to one firsthand. It was a perfect example of what's, what our officers go to, and it was here in Town Center a couple of weeks ago. There was a, a guy parked over by Starbucks. Somebody called in and said, hey, there's a suspicious person in this truck watching people at the farmer's market with binoculars. I happened to be there, so I went and talked to him. He and his wife were, actually had a, a visitation set up at DSHS, and they were waiting for their baby to arrive there, and they, but they didn't want to park closer because of the farmer's market that was going on. So, definitely strange, and I watched them go in for their visitation, so I, I don't question what they were saying. But it's things like that that officers frequently respond to that fall into that category, that, that broad category of suspicious people. Overall, numbers look very good. The one that stands out is almost 10% increase is person crimes. It largely accounted for by aggravated and simple assaults, and there's, I covered a little bit later in the, the slideshow or into the, some of the analysis that's done. But what we did see was a significant increase in domestic violence assaults. Of all persons crimes or all assaults, typically, we see about 50% of them being domestic violence. Looking at this last quarter, it's about 60% that is domestic violence related. What I've started doing is reaching out to other agencies and looking at other parts of the country to see if there's something that, some magic program out there that people have used or something that, that cities have done to take a bite out of domestic violence. What I've seen so far are, after the assaults already happened to prevent, you know, recidivism or repeat assaults. I'd like to find something that prevents the assault or at least, you know, has some way of stepping in before it actually happens. Yes, sir.
Mr. Whalen.
I was going to ask, Chief, if there's been any help with the enhancement of the penalty we have with domestic violence occurring in the presence of a minor? Have we seen any help with that?
I know we've charged that, and that might account for some of the increase and that there's, but that would have been domestic violence to begin with, so I don't know, but there's-
I was hoping it'll be a deterrent at some point.
Right. And, and that is still looking at the big picture of, you know, the impact a law has. You know, we're still a couple of years away from being able to really evaluate what kind of an impact that would have.
So, I can tell you that I talked to the prosecutor about that, and she felt it was an effective tool in plea bargaining to other domestic violence charges, that the enhancement being available resulted in a savings of trial time and more guilty pleas to a more basic assault charge. And I got some validation of that from the head of the Pierce County Public Defender's Department, who was opposed to the county instituting something similar because it would result in more of their clients going to jail, which was an argument that wasn't particularly well-received. Mr. Brannister.
Chief, you know, as I've talked with some of the domestic violence nonprofits groups that do that, you know, the, the White WCA and others, and they have, over the past number of years, been actively encouraging victims to report and particularly to report not on the fourth time, but on the first time, you know? And so, to the extent that their work is successful, you know, that would make the numbers look like what you see if victims aren't waiting for it to have been a recurring instance but are reporting at an earliest, an earlier incident to be able to go and do that. You know, and, and I, and I don't know how you, how you gauge that, but that would actually be a good thing.
I agree. I agree. If, if that's the case, then absolutely, that'd be tough to measure without going through interviewing every domestic violence victim for those purposes, but I agree, that would be a good, I guess, a good indicator. And moving on to some of our, our charts, and these are the persons crimes that I talked about being up, again, accounted for mostly by aggravated and simple assaults, and we are still seeing, you know, more than our share, and by our, I mean Tacoma, Lakewood, and Pierce County, more than our share of gun crime involved in a lot of these. And Western State Hospital, you know, I continue to, to include these numbers because I think it's, it's still relevant to at least keep, be aware of. I actually met today with Mary Robinett and the CEO, David Holt, the CEO from Western State Hospital, who, at the direction of the governor, was told to go and meet with Mary and myself in, in response to some Western State employees going and talking about how, you know, nothing ever gets charged and there's all these assaults going on, when really it is, it's, it's not a, it's not a criminal justice issue, it's how the hospital's managed, and how DSHS manages it, and the rules they, they go by with felony flips from the forensic center into civil and just the revolving doors that they have out there. So, there's, I don't know, I honestly don't know, don't have a solution. There's a lot of, a lot of people that are pointing fingers at the hospital and, and maybe at us, and maybe at the prosecutor's office, but I think more serious effort needs to be taken at higher levels in state government to, to work, look at exactly how patients go from one side to the next and just how they're managed. Can you go back this way? Sure.
So, I'm a little troubled in my own mind trying to rationalize. We've got from third quarter of 18 through, you know, second quarter now of 19, a steady increase in person crimes, and are those typically misdemeanor-type assaults? You mentioned a lot of DV, right?
Yes.
And on the second side of our packet tonight, we're going to look and see about how we're going to reallocate court costs because of the declining number of events and the extra capacity we have in Lakewood. So, something isn't jiving to me. We're either having increased crime that's going either uncharged or unprosecuted or something.
Or it's going to the felony level.
Yeah.
Which we're, which we are seeing a lot of ag, I mean, there's a significant number of aggravated assaults. I think it was an 11% increase in aggravated, which-
Which is a felony level, right?
Which is felony level, yeah. That goes, that goes down to the Pierce County Court.
Do we believe that that increase, almost 100 from third quarter of 18 to 19 predominantly is aggravated versus regular?
I would, I would say they're, they're fairly evenly split.
Okay. Because there, there's something going on where we got to figure out how we can better avoid, and I bet, it would be interesting to know how many of these are multiple opportunity offenders, right? If the same kind of guy or gal is doing this more than once. And, and what we're doing with these frequent flyers on the prosecutorial side, if they truly are misdemeanors. If not, then that's a Pierce County thing that we don't have a lot of control over.
Right.
There's got, there's just something that isn't working in my mind because of the, the volume going through our court system is declining, and yet our crimes are increasing.
Right. And the, to talk about the, you know, the repeat offenders essentially for, for our misdemeanor court, what we see for misdemeanors, when we're talking about repeat offenders, a lot of those are people with mental health issues and people that, that sort of, they're not hardened criminals. The ones that, we do see some going to, to felony court where they are, and I, I give an example later in the analysis, where it's, they're the people that are part of the high-profile offender or high-priority offender unit with the prosecutor's office. They're, they're-
Where they're having some success on those guys, right?
Yes, yeah. And there's a few that have popped up, and I'll give one example in a bit, but they are, that's not just talk or words on paper. They are actively looking at longer sentences and retaining people that are committing repeat offend, repeat offenses.
Yeah, would be interesting to know.
Property crimes, there is a, a bit of an-
Ms. Ross.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You're on the wrong side. My-
On the Western State side, is it true that violent crime patients at Western State, until they go to trial, and these are violent crimes that have committed murders with axes, hatches and so forth, they're given day passes until they go to trial?
I, if, I don't believe so. I mean, that's, the, they, because the, the, to earn a day pass or grounds privileges, you, you have to go through multiple steps and multiple phases to get to that point. And I don't think somebody that's awaiting trial would actually be able to get through all those, those phases to be able to earn time off or grounds privileges, is my understanding.
Okay. That was a rumor that I heard, and I thought it can't be, but-
Yeah, I don't, I, there's certainly people that, not necessarily awaiting trial, but if you look at their entire history, criminal history, that they have some, some significant acts of violence in their past, and they are there for, you know, at the hospital for long-term, and they, at some point, are given grounds privileges, that does occur. But as far as just folks that are there waiting for trial or, I, that I haven't seen.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, look, moving on to property crimes, so the, we did see a small increase from the first quarter. And what I can tell you is that is largely accounted for by graffiti. And because it's considered vandalism, so that's, it's reported as a property crime. Which, bad in that we don't wanna see a bunch of graffiti, but if we're looking at, you know, burglaries and thefts, those numbers are still very low, which is worth celebrating, I guess. And I'll talk a little bit more in a couple of slides about, I don't know, arrests that are, or a couple of arrests that our officers made related to some serial graffitiists. And then, and then total crime is, of course, up if you look at, you know, even though property crime is still very low, there was a little increase because of the graffiti, and then persons crimes are up as well. But up from last quarter. If you look at the numbers historically, they're still the one, two, like the fifth lowest in quarter in the past three or four years. Collisions as well, you know, we see our, a little bit of a spike and we do have what's coming, coming up a speed emphasis by, with the department, not just our traffic unit, but we're, we have different locations that have been identified as, you know, high-speed areas. And we will have officers out saturating those areas at different times. We're gonna announce it on social media, just, just to give everybody a warning and which really won't matter because people will still speed. And there will be mandatory citations issued for every stop, mandatory stops and mandatory citations. Not a quota, just if you stop somebody for going seven over, they're getting a ticket for going seven over. So, we, we think that will be the way to really change behavior. And our traffic sergeant sitting in the back, Sergeant Fraser's the one that'll be leading that effort. And we should be seeing that here in the next month or so. So, you'll probably trade some of the phone calls you get for speeding to, "I got stopped for speeding." And this is a very specific issue that's come up and I think Deputy Mayor Whalen has fielded sort of the brunt of, of this in that some of the residences around Gravelly Lake were reporting an increase in, in perceived crime. So, what we did was look at that census block that covers that. And just to be clear, the census block, it's a little, a little confusing and that, that part is pink as well, but it actually is this area here is the census block that encompasses Gravelly Lake. So, it actually goes down to Tillicum and North Horn. It goes all the way down to the country club. And you could see there, there was an increase in calls for service. We average, you know, or have averaged over the past, you know, couple of years or since, they're looking at the, till January of eighteen, about thirty-one point two calls per month. We're up to thirty-eight. And as you can see, it's not even the highest month in the past two years. And Deputy Mayor, I don't know when the call started that you were first getting, I, I think it was in the past, you know, a couple of months. And you could see that there was an increase in calls for service and an increase in reports of different kinds from, you know, three in April to seven in May and nine in June. And looking at those, no, you know, the majority of them were property crimes. I only saw one actual persons crime. It was an assault at the country club, actually at an event there. Very minor assault. And then the rest were property crimes and a lot of vehicle-related crimes. No, of note, no houses were actually broken into. It was, you know, a couple of cars were broken into and maybe a window that was smashed. Nothing that we want to see, but the residential burglaries are, are something that I look at closely. Oh, and let me back up, there was a second persons crime. It was the, the one that I think most everybody heard about was the, the two landscapers that had the, were confronted by the two guys that were armed and made them take their clothes off essentially and wait, you know, and then they took off. But there was no, there was no crime other than that. And they had confronted, the landscapers had confronted the, the two suspects. So, that's what I found in the, as I looked at the, the numbers from there. A, a small increase, I did not see any, any significant crime pattern that we could point to and say that, you know, here's where we can focus our efforts.
So, one thing that I think may have an influence on that, and we, I don't have any solution for addressing it, is that the perception of vehicle prowls and prowlers in the neighborhoods got up with ring doorbells. Because people post somebody looking around their house.
Right.
Though they don't successfully break into anything.
Right.
Or they steal something out of their yard and, and instead of just realizing it's gone, they'll report it and publish it to its, to their neighbors. And so, I, I think we're gonna see a perception trend that's negative. So, it's gonna be, I think, important to, to keep our eyes on the numbers of actual reports and crimes as opposed to perception. But how to counter that, I don't know.
I, and we've, I mean, we've seen that with social media for a couple of years now, you know, suspicious people beget suspicious people. And that's, you know, somebody, somebody does experience an actual car break-in and somebody else says, "Well, I saw this, this, you know, suspicious person in the neighborhood." Well, and somebody else, you know, saw somebody they don't know, and so they see a suspicious person too. And it, it really does sort of kinda take on a life of its own. Mr. Bulkey.
Yeah, mine's related to that. Real world experience on that, there was a suspicious person down at one part of Interlochen and I got a photo and a, somebody's out there kind of text from a friend of mine. And then I was coming home from the gym, drove around my little neighborhood and there the guy was wandering around. How the hell he got in the gate? He was wandering around. And I stopped and, nice view, I said, "Well, thanks, what the hell are you doing here?" And so, Rick Willery chased him out of the gate and then he went down toward the horn. So, there, there is an issue of some interesting characters just kinda wandering around. And he was over on a hundredth and Bridgeport wandering around.
And we have, off our nice ten-foot white sidewalk.
Yeah.
Around Gravelly Lake, they're, they're fence, no, they're fence jump, fence jumpers in Madera. One of my neighbors had their car stolen.
Right. And I, you know, and I get that, you know, that people are on the, on the lookout for people that could be out there committing crimes and, you know, that's, you have a gated community and that's people that are, you know, that, yeah, obviously had no business being in there. But we also see people that are just out walking around and that people just don't either recognize or know or they're, they have their own suspicions and they, they end up calling in.
I've, I've also, anecdotally, I've also seen reports that very obviously were LDS missionaries and political doorbellers.
They're bad news too.
Yeah, yeah. It might, it might be annoying, but they are really committing a lot of crimes. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bulkey. Between the Nextdoor app and, and those, those new things, the, yeah, they're gonna cause a lot of, you're gonna be chasing a lot of people who just happen to be walking down the street. Because I've seen those, it's like, person walking down the street, it's like, and then once in a while, people actually will retort, like, "And?"
Right.
You know, but it's kind of driven a whole, like you say, suspicious, least suspicious.
Yeah, and it's, you know, that's one of the things I've, I've talked about for a while is that with social media and the news media, we just get blasted with the next thing that's gonna kill you.
Right.
And has everybody just on edge and thinking that the boogeyman's around every corner.
Right.
As opposed to just kinda taking a breath and saying, you know, is that somebody just walking down the street or are they doing something wrong?
So, Chief, I, I do, I do wanna, I don't wanna increase your workload.
That's right.
But I really do like the breakdown by census tract. And I, I, personally, I would like it if every quarter you picked out one census tract. So, in twenty years, you would be, I don't know how many census tracts are in the city. But, and, but I think, I think ideally, one that would tell a story, good or bad. And, and, or in areas, I don't know.
No, I, I completely get where you're coming from. I think, I do think that's-
I mean, you don't have to do all twenty census tracts or whatever, but that just, just take one of these once a quarter and say, "Okay, here's, here's one we've been working on," or, you know, "Here's one that's an issue and this is what we're planning to do."
Maybe overlay one with economic development and see-
You could try that.
What's that?
For apartments.
Apartments, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I don't wanna, if it's gonna be umpteen hours of work, I'm not sure that I wanna do that.
It's not my work, I just sent an email to Doug Strand and he produces it, so. It's actually not, he, he's, really has it all down to, he has all these queries built in, so it should be fairly easy.
Okay, well, I just think it's interesting and it's, and it gets us like, 'cause the citywide stats are nice, I really like them. But this is an interesting kind of, okay, here are the calls, here's what's going on. And it does, does tell us a little bit more. And it would just be nice to know that like, okay, so in the area that's Lake City or something, which we don't really talk about all that much from a crime standpoint, but, you know, they've got a, a very active and healthy, and they, they listen to your guys show up at their meetings and talk about stuff and, or various things like that, you know.
Okay, yeah, no, I think that's, that'd be interesting. Okay. The next slide is, you know, we're continuing our, our monitoring of adult family homes and calls for service. And you can see the top ninety-nine and the different colors of green or the, like Woodville and Clover Park are different colors and Coralwood and Angel's Place. Those are ones that changed their name since the last quarter, which is, it, I'm not sure the reason that they get bought out or something else, it just seems shady to me, but that's just kinda what they're up to. You can see the total calls for service or the second quarter in total calls for service. These are both police and fire, is the way we pull them, just so you have an idea of the, the overall drawn resources, not just the police department. And I do mention in the next slide under the analysis, but of the, like, if you look at the top one, the Woodville, like thirteen of the nineteen year-to-date calls for service are medical aid. A lot of what we deal with at, at the adult family homes from the police perspective is missing persons. Someone will walk away and they're unaccounted for and, you know, necess, you know, presumed unable to take care of themselves. So, we get called and they generally get found pretty quickly, but that accounts for a call for service. And just a little analysis of some of the, the incidents that, that we dealt with. You know, we did have what was, you know, dangerously close to being another homicide was an eighteen-month-old that showed up at St. Clair Hospital with significant injuries, just from head to toe. And the, ended up, long story short, through a, a very in-depth investigation and by Detective Chris Bowle, obtained a confession from the father. He's the one that actually inflicted the injuries. He's currently in jail and awaiting trial for first-degree assault. The child that lived will have some level of paralysis the rest of his life. Just, it's just tragic and it's, you know, it's, it's tough to, for, for the detectives and officers that investigate those as well. But nothing that you'd see on the news, but it's, you know, definitely tragic and worth highlighting or noting, I should say. We did have a, a shooting at Harry Todd Park, likely gang-related. The investigation's ongoing, but I believe we've identified a couple of suspects in that. Our one homicide we did have this quarter was at a trailer in Tillicum, or excuse me, Woodbrook. One that we've been dealing with for years, that they just seemed to, the, it's just this magnet for people committing crimes and they let anybody and everybody stay there. And that's what we ended up with here is criminals, you know, getting mad at other criminals. The, the suspect that robbed the family at Rifle Point, he's the one that, that I talked about that had, is on the high-priority offender list. He's been involved in robberies in Pierce County for several years and this will actually be a third strike for him. So, again, the very good work by officers and detectives investigating it. And then he was the one that was found up in federal way with the, with the victim's car. I talked a little bit about crimes against persons, adult family homes. I had mentioned about the, the majority of those being for medical aid and then ours being missing persons. And then the notable arrests related to the, to graffiti, it actually ties in nicely to the work our bike team's been doing. Some of our bike officers were riding around the skate park, saw a couple of, I can't even say kids, they were nineteen and twenty-seven years old. They're sitting at the table drawing on the table. They were able to ride up because they're not immediately recognizable as officers, able to ride up on them and detain them as they're, they're drawing. The graffiti that they were drawing was recognized as graffiti that was done in the bathrooms there. And then we later had a series where we were able to, you know, tie different symbols to all this different graffiti together. And one of them was actually kind enough to have a, a book that he practiced in so we could, you know, compare the symbols that we were seeing to what he had in the book. It'll be interesting to compare that to, or the next quarter's graffiti to what we were seeing this last quarter since we made this arrest. And they're still pen, I mean, it's, they haven't gone to trial or anything else yet, but the arrest was, was done and charges were filed. So, he, we think they also might be the little bucky, this, the circle face with the buck tooth, the buck teeth that we were seeing around all the way down to Lacy. So, again, it's, you know, significant in two ways. One, you know, can show that, you know, only two people can create a lot of havoc with the graffiti that they're doing and, you know, underscores the value of the bike team.
Does typically get charged at the felony level because it's rated in two fifty?
No, typically not. I mean, we, we look at what, where we're most likely to have success and we, we take those to the, to our prosecutor. And one other note that did not make the, the analysis, but it's worth sharing with you all is that I've been asked recently by the Pierce County Police Chiefs Association to sort of spearhead an effort to form an officer, county-wide officer-involved shooting team. It's not crew, it's just a multi-jurisdictional team that just does officer-involved shootings. And that's in light of initiative or I-940 and the changes in law there. So, there will be something more coming from that. We're not really reinventing the wheel because other counties do it. It's similar to what we do with crew, but we'll be adding Tacoma and Pierce County and it will just be for officer-involved shootings. Something else I wanted to share-
Mr. Brannister.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I, just one incident I just, it isn't on here and wasn't an incident, but that, the, the young man that, that temporarily came to stay in the DSHS facility on Interlochen and I guess there, there was, it was reported having walked away once.
Right.
That, did that resolve itself and has he moved on?
I, I don't believe he's moved on, but that's the last-
I mean, he was not supposed to be here for two weeks.
Yeah. It's, it's worth us following up to see if he's still there or not, but we have not gotten a call about him or from that house since the, the time when he walked away.
I, I, I guess, following up at least before school starts so that we have some awareness is, is he, or which school he's going to end up being attending.
Well, there's leases running out.
Is it?
DSHS leased the property, it was foreclosed by a nationwide financial institution. My understanding is DSHS in describing the property said that their lease is running out. Because they were listed, they were listing it for sale, I'm gonna re-look some stuff up. But it, it was like September or something.
But it, it was like September or something, the, the DSHS lease on the house runs out, and they're gonna move the facility somewhere else. Maybe next door, I don't know.
One, before I move on to one, just quick note about the Fourth of July. It's technically the third quarter, but we did not see any significant spike in calls for service. And that's looking at the Fire Department as well. They did see a spike in brush fires on one day. I don't remember if it was the Fourth or the Fifth. But that's the only statistic, you know, significantly important statistical change over that time period. And we did get some pretty interesting drone footage at ten o'clock at night that we'll bring forward here soon, but, needless to say, there's fireworks in every direction. One of the things I wanted to bring forward, too, and I, we started looking at different databases or what's available to us, and looking at the, you know, we talk about patrol all the time, the dispatch calls for service, but looking at the number of cases that are assigned out to our different units, and as you can see, you know, between major crimes, special assault, and property pro act is a significant number of cases. Of note, I would think is, almost half of the cases assigned out, the major crimes, are from Western State Hospital. So of the one twenty-sixty-four, and then the runaways and missing persons, it says fifty-seven of the one twenty-six. We don't have fifty-seven missing persons. I mean, they, those get resolved pretty quickly. They just need, you typically a phone call back home to say, hey, has so-and-so returned, and that, almost invariably, that is the case. And then, I wanted to include, as we talked about in the past quarters for this year, some, just brief descriptions of SRT activity. You can see we had three planned incidents, two warrants, and then security for the Pierce County Law Enforcement Memorial. Four incidents that involved on-duty folks that helped different units. One of which was, as you can see, the assisting K-9 in searching a house with an armed suspect hiding inside. The armed suspect was hiding inside a washing machine. Believe it or not, and the.
Did he get away clean?
I, I, we, a lot of us suggested just starting the, starting the rinse cycle, see what happens. Also, kind of of note, going back a couple of slides to the homicide we had at the, the mobile home in Woodbrook, and I said a lot of people are allowed to stay there. He's one of those people. So that's, he had ran from that mobile home over to this house where he was hiding inside the, the washing machine. And then the negotiators assisted on the Narrows Bridge, and typically how those go out is dispatch just gets on the air to all channels saying, are there any negotiators that are on air that can help with a, a jumper on the bridge? If there is somebody available, they just go. And that was, that was the case there. They did fifty-five hours of training as well, and they integrate with Pierce Transit, Sound Transit, and West Pierce Fire and Rescue. One of the things that is notable about West Pierce, or one of the things that's important about partnering with them, is what's been seen around the country is an increased use in fire as a weapon by different, by different suspects. You know, lighting something on fire to either, you know, create a barrier between them and police, or to draw attention and bring people in closer. So being able to do things like, you know, work a fire hose, or, or just integrate together is important. And that is the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
There are questions for the chief.
Thank you all.
Thanks, thanks for your update. Moving from arresting to convicting, we have a municipal court contract update with Ms. Kelly Fong.
Called the fair share model, that the city is looking to implement here in the future, starting in 2020. So the city of Lakewood operates the Lakewood Municipal Courts, which is a court of limited jurisdiction. The Lakewood Municipal Court provides municipal court service to the city of University Place, the city of DuPont, as well as the town of Stillicum. Currently, the court contract method that is in existence, and has been existent since 2016, is one that's based on fourteen thousand cases coming into Lakewood Municipal Court. And it's important to note that, looking at the, the trends and statistics of the court, this was the, the volume of the court back in 2014 and 2015. So when this model was implemented, it, it made a lot of sense. However, the model's very static. It doesn't change over time, and as we're seeing a decline in court case filings, what we're seeing is that this model is no longer the most useful model. So with that kind of fourteen thousand case filing limit, if the court doesn't hit that threshold, any unused court cases are called unused court capacity, and this is passed along as responsibility of the city of Lakewood. Something that's really important to note about the existing court contract model is that infraction and criminal filings are charged to all of the jurisdictions at the same rate. So I've provided you a couple of examples. So if it was a, a parking ticket, if it was a driving-under-the-influence filing, all of those are considered the same under this model. Also, under this model, DWLS III filings received significant reductions, and paid infractions also received significant reductions. And what Table A over here is showing you is, again, that unused capacity is that, that first line here. And this is what the court had in 2017, so that is a significant portion of that fourteen thousand cases was unused capacity in 2017, and increased in 2018. So as I mentioned previously, the court capacity system made a lot of sense back in 2016, but now here in 2019, it's outdated due to the decline in court volume, and this is something that we're seeing here locally, but also regionally and nationally. Changes in technology and processes at the courts, and also changes in court personnel, in particular, the decline in court personnel over the last couple of years. So looking at.
Mr. Brandstetter.
On that, that slide there, you know, I sort of understood we were making changes in procedure and technology that actually would improve capacity, increase capacity, by being able to arraign people by telephone and being able to go and do that. I don't see how that reduces the capacity of the court. It was sort of presented to us as that it would make the court more efficient, you could do more.
The, the fourteen thousand case model is, again, kind of an arbitrary number that was set based on the capacity of the courts back in 2015. New technologies may have made it more efficient to process here in 2019.
Okay, I, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, is, when, on this chart, this seems to imply that these things reduce capacity, but it, they just im, impact capacity in either direction. Perhaps, you know, a given piece of, a given process or technology, I mean. And some processes are mandated, I suppose, by courts and, and, and other things. That would, that would cause us our, our capacity to do that, like public defender situations. I don't know. All right, so, thank you.
I, I actually don't read it that way. The decline in court volumes there, but these are, I think, indications that the variables that were used at the time, we picked fourteen thousand as probably a dart in the wall, or an estimate of the capacity, and then there are variables in the formula, and those variables have changed. Number of people working, what the technology is. Who's, how many fines do you collect? All those things have changed in the meantime.
So looking at the court here in 2019 and beyond, the recommendation is to move to a new model for cost allocations amongst the four jurisdictions that receive services from the Lakewood Municipal Court. And what is recommended is the fair share model basic. So this would allocate court costs based on percent of use, not on percent of use of some number that was established back in 2015, based off of what they thought capacity was during that time. This model would also have different rates for infraction filings between criminal and, or filings, I should say, between criminal and infraction. And this would be based on a average of hearings over a three-year period of time of the court, and I'll get into that a little bit more in detail. It also allocate costs specifically to jurisdictions based on their use of public defender, which is currently in the model that exists. However, that is not the case for work crew and transport. It also allocate fixed costs, so this is your IT cost, your maintenance and operation costs, to all of the jurisdictions based on their three-year average of use. And importantly, I think it would be flexible for changes based on these three-year averages. But in addition to that, we'd want to continue to monitor the court activities and make adjustments in the future as necessary. So just to take a real quick look at the volume that Lakewood Municipal Court is seeing. This is showing you case filings over time, so from 2013 to 2018. And what you can see is a decline in court filings. So it peaked in 2015, and since then has declined. Overall, it's been about a twenty-four percent decline since 2015, which has resulted in an increase of unused capacity, which, again, Lakewood has been responsible for in the past. So based off of this data, looking to 2019 and 2020, we are projecting a continued decrease in case filings. You can see that it's looking about nine thousand three hundred or so for 2019, and based on the data that I've seen through June, that is pretty accurate thus far. And then, looking to 2020, it would continue to decline. Looking at hearings, so this is important to note that this is something that is not taken into account in our current static model. We have seen a uptick in hearings. You can see the, the top line is the overall court, and then it's broken down between the jurisdictions. Again, taking this data and forecasting it out, we will, it's projected that we will see a continued increase in hearings in 2019 and 2020. This graph is showing you the hearings per filing, so on the, it's kind of hard to differentiate the colors here, but on the left-hand side, the smaller bar graph is showing you your hearings per an infraction filing, and then the larger one is showing you your hearings per criminal filing. So on average, what we're seeing is that this is excluding paid infractions. You're having one hearing per a infraction filing, and you're having, on average, around five and a half per criminal filing that comes through Lakewood Municipal Court.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Mr. Weller.
We haven't heard from the judge in a little bit of time, but I'm just kind of looking at that number of twenty-seven thousand hearings, and you kind of wonder what the capacity would be, given one judge, reduced court staff. Even accommodate that can have an increase in capacity, or in hearings, excuse me. Any clue?
I have not looked into that.
Because that, that's gonna impact the cost structure at some point, right? Because if, if we're projecting these hearings to go up, we're gonna have to be able to accommodate more court staff, I would think. I don't know about a better understanding of what they're doing down there. I, I hear you, but I just see if the numbers of filing goes up to twenty thousand. Are they just sending them out the door, or are they actually having hearings? Because their crime stats are going up. Are we letting them out the door, or are they not prosecuting?
Well, the question, if I'm following what Ms. Shannon Kelly Fong is talking about, and we only handle the prosecution side of it, it is more hearings per same case. And so the question becomes, is that because there is some sort of a mandate that those cases have to be heard more times? Is it something that's within our control? Is it something that's beyond our control? Are there constitutional implications? And I don't know that we've taken that deep of a dive to figure out why, instead of the hearings being touched once, they are perhaps being touched more than once, if I'm tracking with what you're saying.
Some data, or not for today, obviously, it would be kind of interesting to know of the hearings, what percent are traffic related, what percent are D V related, is that in there?
So we have it per, per filing, so we'll take a look at that. So what graph six here is showing you is court personnel. Again, this has declined since 2014, from sixteen full-time employees to ten and a half here in 2019. So with the decline in court personnel, if we take a look at filings per court personnel, they've stayed relatively the same, around nine hundred filings per, per court personnel. However, if you look at the hearings per court personnel, they have increased over time. These slides show you, it's a further breakdown of infraction case filings and criminal case filings. So on the left-hand side, you have your infraction filings, and you can see between 2016 to 2018, what the percentages on the side are showing you are, what percentage of the overall filings belong to each of those jurisdictions in the last year.
And those are typical vehicles, then, on the infraction side?
Yeah, we'll have a, take a look into that, too. So looking at infractions by filing, so this is showing you, you know, your traffic infractions, obviously, are the bulk of the infractions that do come in. So this is your speeding, your red lights, seat belts, et cetera. And then you have your non-traffic, which is a lot less, around three hundred, and then your parking. Got your criminal filings by type, so criminal DUI, criminal other traffic, and then criminal non-traffic being the highest, and this would be your criminal trespass, your theft, your assault, et cetera. So looking at the model that is in-existent currently, this shows you 2017 and 2018, what the costs were per a jurisdiction that receives services at Lakewood Municipal Courts. One thing I would make a note of is that in 2018, we reduced the number of capacity to twelve thousand five hundred. And this was intended to be a kind of a stopgap until we could do this analysis based on the significant reduction in case filings that we were seeing. So what you can see in 2017, unused capacity was about twenty percent of the courts. And then, looking, if we'd continued with that system, it was about twenty-eight percent of the court in 2018. But with that reduction of case filings, it brought it back down to that around twenty percent. Looking at the contracts with the jurisdictions that receive services from Lakewood Municipal Courts, they all say that the court's financial provisions will be determined on an annual basis. So the city has reached out to all of those jurisdictions and has scheduled conversations with two of them, and we'll be having one with the last one tomorrow regarding the changing in-court system. Again, this is something that we're looking to implement in 2020. So looking at the, the filings to hearing ratio, which I talked about, one thing that we found in this research is that all filings do not have a equal number of hearings. Again, criminals have substantially more than your infraction filings. And we use this information to assess out, allocate a percentage of court costs per different filing functions. So the fair share options, again, something to implement in 2020. What we would do is take criminal and infraction filings, and based on the percentage of their hearings, they would be assigned all of the remaining judicial costs. So if you look here at Table C, you see a categorized breakdown of all Lakewood Municipal Court costs, and this is using 2018 numbers, just to give you an idea. But we have criminal prosecution, public defender, fixed costs, work crew, transport, and then all of that remaining. So all of the services listed above all of the remaining, again, that would be based on each jurisdiction's percent of use. So if a jurisdiction used, you know, fifty percent of the work crew, they would be responsible for fifty percent of the expenses assigned to work crew. For the filings, that would be where all of the remaining judicial service cost comes into play, and that's where we'd use those hearing to filing ratios. And so what you're looking at here on Table CC is all of those remaining judicial service costs, again, using 2018 as an example, and it's, infraction filings would be twenty-two percent, paid infraction filings, two percent, photo infractions, five percent, and criminal filings, seventy-one percent. And this would change on a yearly basis as those three-year averages change over time. So again, this system is flexible versus the static model that is currently in existence. So as I noted, public defender, work crew, and transport would all be based off of the percent of use that that jurisdiction actually uses. So when we were looking at changing these models, we looked into several things. Two of them were the fair share basic, which is what our recommended model moving forward in two thousand and twenty is. And then we also looked at a fair share at advanced, which broke down criminal filings into a little bit more detail. And this was based on what we were seeing with DUI filings, where they were having on average hearings of about nine hearings per filing. So what Table C here and Table D are showing, again, Table C is just kind of what the costs were for all those services in two thousand and eighteen. And Table D is just breaking down those percentages. So for example, if you look at prosecution, it's broken down between criminal and D W S thirds, and this is based on currently what the model shows. And then Table E just shows you, again, two thousand and eighteen costs and how all of the court's costs would be allocated based on using these percentages. This table right here just shows you an example of the court costs for the jurisdictions here in two thousand and eighteen, if we were to have used it. And it breaks it down by the cost per infractions, criminal, public defenders, photo infractions, transport, work crew, fixed costs. And then a total cost per jurisdiction for two thousand and eighteen, based again on their use of these functions. Table G shows a cost comparison to the fair share model basic. So on the left-hand side, we, again, using two thousand and eighteen numbers, have the fair share basic costs per jurisdiction that use Lakewood Municipal Courts. And then it compares it to that advanced model that I just talked about, where it distinguished the criminal filings, and then also to our current system of fourteen thousand cases and then twelve hundred and fifty thousand cases. As you can see, moving down to Table I, this shows you the delta between the two. Switching to the basic fair share model would reduce Lakewood's municipal court costs by eight percent. And this just provides a table of what I showed on the basic model, but to show the advanced model, as well as how we determined the cost per a filing and other court-related services. And Table J here shows the, the same thing as we just saw with the basic model. It breaks down the advanced model again by cost per jurisdiction, as well as the delta between the advanced model and the current model. That concludes my presentation, but if anybody has any additional questions, I would love to answer them.
Any questions?
What did the jurisdictions tell you, feedback wise?
Feedback-wise, you know, they were very receptive. They understood why we were looking to change the models. One of the things that we did hear from them was wait till two thousand and twenty.
Why is University Place's change so dramatic compared to others?
University Place, so it's kind of a, there's a couple of things going on. Number one, the criminal filings that University Place has currently in the model, you know, you have your criminal and your infraction filings as the same. So their criminal filings are more equitably represented here in this model. And in addition, they also use a lot of transport services. So currently, it's Lakewood and University Place that use the bulk of transport from Pierce County.
So they're Pierce County jail, but they don't have, they don't have.
Video arraignments, yes.
And they have, yeah, and they also have very little traffic enforcement. So that would skew the ratio, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. You, you dove deep. And we now move to a park code update with Ms. Mary.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for saving the best for last. So the parks code, we generally look at the park code every couple of years to just make sure it's current. Sometimes we've made changes based on grant requirements or risk management issues or, or changes in policy. So our park board reviewed the park code thoroughly, as well as some specific areas that we wanted to focus on. And they came up with some recommendations that I'm going to share with you tonight. The first item, and so in your packet, we've included the entire park code in case you wanted to reference anything specifically. But I'm going to kind of follow along on this, on the staff report that we provided. So the first item that we listed was metal detecting. Two years ago, we added metal detecting. We're super excited about adding that because it's an activity that happens in a lot of our parks. And then over the last two years, we've realized that at Fort Silicon Park, there was a reason that the county had no metal detecting at Fort Silicon Park. So mostly to deal with the historic issues, you know, we did run into some problems, not because of metal detecting, but because of our, some of the construction projects. So we just know that we need to be more aware and protective of the historic areas, especially if something is found. It can trigger a whole lot of other issues. So what we did for the code is to update it and to say that metal detecting is restricted in, in, in any area that's considered historic. That gives us the room to move if there's ever any items. At some point, some of our other parks may become historic, but specifically no metal detecting in Fort Silicon Park. And then we just added that if you were metal detecting in other areas, that there were some specific criteria. And we have a brochure, and we've given people best practices in the past, but we decided to put in the code mostly about just not digging bigger than a two-by-two-by-two, just again, so they don't disturb sports fields or turf areas or some of those more activity areas. And so, and most of the metal detector people that, that we work with are helpful and friendly, and they're just out there doing a little hobbying, and, but we just want to protect the city, so. We do, actually, we get a lot of it at Fort Silicon Park. There, a lot of people are at the beach, at American Lake and Harry Todd, they're down there doing that. And, you know, sometimes they're looking for a button or a square nail or something, and, and they're really not supposed to keep those things anyway, because they are previously been property of the state, now they're property of the city, but they are historic in nature, so. But they do it for fun. In fact, we even have a couple of the folks that have been in the park for years, we have their name and address. If there's ever a need for metal detecting, they're happy to come out and partner with us and help us, and so they're, they're good folk. We're just trying to protect the city's best interest, of course, with our codes. So that's metal detecting. The next item was alcohol in the parks. You know, we did a lot of research and added alcohol in the parks several code revisions ago. And because of the pavilion and the nature of some of our larger events that are coming in, we just wanted to take a look at the code. And the fact that the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board is now sort of a new evolving group, we wanted to make sure that we were meeting all of the correct codes that we had, the rules within our codes, so that we could do what we wanted to do in the parks and protect the parks and protect the people, but also have some flexibility for some different kinds of events. So we, we've met with them and realized that our code really provides the necessary guidance that we need. We can be more restrictive than the, the law requires, and so we can say specific things about requiring insurance or maybe some site issues regarding access or defining spaces, things like that. There is a difference between public events and private events, and so those are the kinds of licenses you can get, and there's some criteria surrounding those, so we will follow those. But it, the code that we have provides the guidance and the requirements that we need to be able to allow a person to have a wedding reception at the pavilion, or to be able to do a beer garden at a public event or a private, an activity. In fact, we even learned that there is the ability to co-mingle adults and youth at a private event. The, the liquor control board folks have to approve that. And that again is, if you've defined the space and defined the activity, and we have the proper rules, and they may approve that. That way then, because our outdoor spaces are like, if you're like in a hall or a church room or something like that, you can have co-mingled ages, as opposed to in a public event, you have twenty-one and only in certain defined spaces. So there's, again, we would follow the rules and make sure that we were meeting the letter of our law, but also looking at the, the recommendation and best practices noted by our risk management groups and, and things like that. So, but we aren't recommending any changes, but we just want to let you know that we did thoroughly review that so that we could make sure that we were moving forward with those different kinds of uses that we are anticipating.
Mr. Branson.
Thanks, Mary. I, I guess that in the discussion that you provided us, I didn't understand the section where it said that the Liquor and Cannabis Board said that if a nonprofit wants to run a beer garden, they have to have a business partner.
If you are a business that wants to do a beer garden at a public event, you have to work with a nonprofit, that's our state law. And if you are a nonprofit, you have to purchase the beer or spirits from a licensed facility like the Ram or a restaurant or somebody with the proper licenses. You can't, as a nonprofit, say, one of our rotary clubs couldn't just go out and buy a bunch of alcohol. You're not supposed to get liquor donated in the state of Washington and then just have a beer garden. You have to get it from a licensed place.
Okay, but, but this is not saying that the licensed distributor has to be on-site with you.
Serving. I, I, I have to double check on that.
It seemed like new wording to me that I hadn't heard.
We'll double check that, because that's really kind of an administrative implementation of the, of the different codes, but that, we'll ask that question specifically.
And I know in, in the code, as it's written, where we have the thing about follow all the federal, state, and local rules, I'm sure this is, this is included in that, I just didn't know if that's a new rule. Sounds a little bit different than, you know, I, I, you know, I, I think in terms of the Lions Club and number of the clubs that hold events at McGavick Center. And they get some of the alcohol that they serve from a wide variety of places, to include having members bring bottles of wine and, 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 and do that. So it was struck me as, as a change.
We'll double check on that.
Or, 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 or a clarification of something that wasn't understood while reporting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll clarify that point. And also, just for noting, this liquor control board has changed their rules on donation of things for auctions and events, and so that's a whole new set of things. And that's really the people running it have to, to deal with those issues. We're focusing specifically on the, making sure you have the right licenses, and we have all the right safety factors involved with our events. Generally, the city isn't going to sponsor a, isn't going to sponsor a beer garden. We would have a third party do that, that's a risk management issue for the city and a best practice. So we didn't get into that kind of specification, because that would be the entity doing it that would have to focus on that.
I would just say, it's like with the McGavick Center in particular, where we're providing an organization the use of a city day. You know, where we, so we have some linkage to that event. It would be helpful if we would help the people putting on the events understand the rules.
Yeah, the liquor control board, actually, or liquor and cannabis board, they have a really good website, and they have really clear information on the type of licenses that you need and the requirements regarding that. So I wouldn't want from the city, I mean, that's, that's, we want to be as helpful as possible, but we don't want to get into helping them understand the rules. That's really up to that department, and they have great resource people there that'll help you with that. But, but we'll check out those questions that you asked about, does a nonprofit have to have this business with them at the event? And then if I can find additional information that they, we've recently seen regarding the donation, we just want to keep our service clubs out of trouble. So I'll find out what I can about that.
But earlier you said there's no change.
In our code, is what I'm saying. We're not asking for a change in our code. I'm just talking about the changes in. Yeah, there's no change in our code.
Yeah, our code says follow all the rules.
And the rules may have changed, that's up to the state.
Right, right, that's what we're saying.
You said no change. Changes, so when we vote on this next week, there's no change.
No change to the code, correct. Yes, geocaching. So geocaching is an activity that's happening throughout our park system, actually throughout the whole city. It's a very family-friendly, fun activity. Recently, we've had a lot of groups requesting permission to put them in certain locations, because there, it's a requirement now of official geocaching associations, the state association. And so, and I think just because there's so many out there that there wasn't much control, and their individuals are putting them on private property and on public property, so. It, it varies, but oftentimes, think of a tuna fish can or a little Tupperware thing that's about this big, and they're hidden in places. And then you go use, in the old days, you had to get a special geocache device, but now everybody has GPS on their phones, and so you can put in coordinates, and it's like a scavenger hunt. And sometimes they're easy to find, sometimes they're hard to find, but if you just, anybody can look on the website and figure out where they're at, and there's hundreds of them in locations. So what happened, what kind of triggered this was is that we've been asked recently by several folks to be able to do that. Some of them want to build metal boxes, some of them wanted to have electricity attached to them. I mean, there's been all these different, he wanted to do like, remember Operation? The guy where he had the tweezers and he had to take the things out? It was an Operation game inside a geocache, which is really much bigger and more complicated than, than most. But, but most of the time, they're in like a little container and they're hidden, and there's, and what you do, sometimes there's a log book. You find it, you open it up, you write your name, Mary Dodsworth, and there's like a Happy Meal toy or a token. And sometimes you take something out and you put something in, yeah. And sometimes you open it up and there's nothing in there, it's kind of a big buzzkill, but you still might sign the log, but you're just happy to have found it. But, so they vary. So anyway, what kind of triggered this was is that we realized we didn't have a policy about it. Is it public property, is it a right of way, what do you, you know, street ends versus in the parks? So we wanted to create a policy so that we could have a little bit more control. And what sort of triggered it was is a, a person built a post office box. It looked like a big post office box, mailbox, in a street end area, right in the middle of it was blocking access. And it wasn't a dinky little thing, it was a big old full-size thing. We had neighbors calling to say, are we trying to restrict access? Are we trying to pretend that it's privately owned? And we had told the individual that they couldn't do it till we came up with a policy, and then they went and did it anyway. And it was quite a complicated geocache to solve. But, but anyway, but we really didn't have any footing. We were looking at all the different codes, you know, really, how could we really tell them no? So we just want to make sure whatever's happening on public property, again, is safe, is not creating liability or risk factor for folks. So we've done, in, in all of these code update and changes, we always assess, check lots of different sites and cities and towns and organizations to make sure that we're looking at, you know, some are very complicated, we want them to be as simple as possible. So, so we're adding geocaching as a new code item, and then adding some terms to our definition section, just so that, again, it's, it's a new activity. And you can see, it's really just saying that we want it to be small, we don't want it to be, you know, something that's overly complicated, and that it needs to be, you need to get basically a permit for it, and we'll create a permit for it. And then I, I've showed you some of the things we would put on the permit, and, and that's really the requirement of most places, from state parks to cities. They just want to know that you're putting something there, what it, what it is. Now, if we find something, we don't know what it is, we can toss it. If we find something and it's inappropriate, or they're putting something inappropriate in there, we can toss it. And also, it's just a way of, again, knowing that people are, you know, hiding things on your property, so. But it is, it's a fun, family-friendly thing, there's lots of folks that have done it, and like I said, sometimes they're very easy to find, sometimes they're very complicated. Sometimes they're there, but they're, I mean, they're not even there anymore, because maybe they got lost or someone took it or something. We're not, yeah. It's, it's, yeah.
Jason did that in the Army.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is. Starts heating up, yeah. Kids really like it. And Heidi can tell you some of the stories of the geocaching. So camping, camping in the park. So we've had various issues regarding camping in the park, and we wanted to make sure that based on the most recent court decisions, that we were making sure that we are in compliance, that we had good processes in place, and that our codes weren't defying any, you know, court actions. So we reviewed it, and we really think that our code matches with what we need to have. We are making or suggesting a couple of changes. One is to remove the term campsite, we don't have campsites in the city, and so that was something we inherited from the county, and so we've removed that from our code. And then we are looking at just changing the wording a little bit on camping is prohibited, that it is in conjunction, needs to be in conjunction with an approved special use permit by the city. We do allow camping for, you know, if a group's coming in to do a special event, and they're setting up on Friday and the event's on Saturday, that they may have a motorhome or somebody that kind of stays with the stuff. that they may have a motorhome or somebody that kind of stays with the stuff so that it's protected. When we did the For Us event, which was a three-day music festival, it was primarily church youth groups. They did have an area that was assigned for camping. Those kids did volunteer work with the event, so we did allow it through the special use permit, an area defined for camping. And so, again, we can allow it if it's associated with a permit and the type of activity that it's serving. If Councilmember Bookie wanted to come in and just camp at Fort Silicon Park for the weekend because he thought it'd be great fun, he wanted to be first in line at the dog park, that would probably be not an approved, because it's not associated with a special event or a special use permit.
Do you get issues with people who intermittently camp in parks?
Sure.
Folks who allow that?
Yeah, you know, we don't get as much at Fort Silicon because it's so heavily used that anytime a blue tarp gets started there, you know, we hear about it. And so then we work with our human resource or our human services folks and we, you know, get things cleaned up.
Wordslake.
Wordslake is where we really have a lot of issues because we have a defined area and then beyond that is private property. And then you have like the area up along the freeway. So there's a lot of good hiding spots there. So that's an area that's, that takes from one of the parks' perspectives. Those are really the two, the two areas. In Springburg mostly, it's just junk getting thrown into the creek, near the creek as people are passing through over the bridge. So, but that gets cleaned up pretty quick, too. But we feel like the code that we have and it's been reviewed by legal department is, meets our needs and also doesn't get us into trouble that we may get into trouble because of it being restricted or something in the future. And then I put in some definitions. There's a lot of things associated with that activity that we already have in the code that aren't necessarily about camping, but definitely could go with it in some fashion or another. The next issue we have in here is smoking, and that was a.
Mr. Branson.
Mary, I just had one question and the last item in that section, it's 876-290, and it's titled tents and shelters on beaches. But the wording seems to apply, that it applies more broadly than on beaches. It talks about tents everywhere.
Okay.
So, and so maybe the title of the section doesn't need the on beaches in it, even though the on beaches is included in the text.
Sure. And the tents in excess of 400 square feet, that's a fire code issue, so that's why that's there. So, but if council would like me to remove on beaches, we're happy to do that. Just make it more generic. No, sure?
Just take a look.
Oh, okay.
Just make the text go.
Sure. No, I agree. And I think that it started with, I'm sure, the entire park code initially when we incorporated was basically taken over by the county and we took out county and did park. And it's had lots and lots of changes over the years based on, you know, we're a little bit more progressive in some areas and we cut a lot of it out. So that was probably just a leftover of that. So happy to remove that if council thinks that's a good idea. Okay, thank you. And then smoking, that was a topic that we've talked about, I think 2014 was the big conversation regarded, regarding it. Because there's been a lot of vaping and marijuana laws have changed since then, we wanted to go back and look at it and just make sure that it was still saying what we thought it should say. Council was pretty clear in their direction regarding smoking. And mainly, you really wanted it to be not within 50 feet of areas where there were children and people gathering so it wasn't causing secondhand smoke issues. So instead of coming back with a change to the code, they really just added more locations because we have now kitchens and meeting spaces that we didn't have before. And also, the dog park wasn't noted in there, although it's certainly an active area. And then when we do special events like a concert in the park or maybe, you know, in the middle of an area where we're doing, say, a scavenger hunt for kids or something, just to kind of clearly define that. You know, most people are fairly respected or respectful, but we just want, they, the park board wanted to add a few extra locations, but not necessarily changing the structure of the code in which you gave us direction for.
So participant areas during a special event would be the pavilion?
Like a defined area. It could be a soccer field, but maybe we're doing some other kind of group activity there. It's really kind of the defined area. Yeah, it could be out in the car show area, so.
Mayor, can I ask?
Thank you. Was there any discussion among the park board members about banning smoking, vaping, et cetera outright?
Again?
Yep.
Yeah, they did have that conversation. They felt like they got really clear direction from council and we didn't get new direction from council. So they weren't, they'd be happy to research that and give you their opinion about it. There's a few new members than the last time we chatted, but because they felt like they heard from the council, they felt like they would just enhance it to include areas that hadn't been represented in the past.
The reason I ask is I recall that 2014 discussion quite clearly. I also recall the vote being four to three. And I think I took the lead on saying that we should allow smoking in the park. But since the rise of the vaping and the rise, well, I think will be the legalization of marijuana and liquid at some time in the near future, I'm not so sure it's a good idea anymore. I think perhaps smoking, vaping, the use of marijuana and other things that people can figure out to smoke should be prohibited. And I don't say this from a big brother is telling the citizens what to do. I'm saying it more from the image that we project and that perhaps social responsibility is something that can't quite conveniently hide or that, that being able to smoke shouldn't, can't just simply hide behind where you're telling me what to do. What you do in your home is your own business. What you do in public, particularly from a perspective of image, I think should allow for a little more discussion. Thank you.
I can say from attending the meetings that I have not heard from any member of parks and rec board that indicates they think the current policy is a good one. They have, they made a recommendation that smoking be banned and they have discussed it since then and have discussed it informally. And their feeling is, would it do any good if we went back to council and ask again because we think we should ban it? They haven't done a, taken formal action on that, but that's their continuing sentiment.
And I tend to agree with that. Again, I come back to my point about image. And when you start to factor in the health costs of these habits, and if we are setting a good habit to our youth in Lakewood where they don't see it, and one of the things that just irritates me is you're behind some car in traffic and you see this huge plume of smoke. And I've seen it in the park as well. And then I think about, we've had a rather spirited discussion about the legalization of shops in Lakewood, which, again, I think I might have had a word or two on. Maybe it's, since we want all these other things, maybe we ought to say, well, in public, no.
There's, there's, there's two options, I guess, we could consider if council gives us direction. The park board's happy to have that conversation or do some additional research if you're interested because things have changed since 2014 or there's more information. In fact, we have members of our health department here that could probably give us some research as well. So we could take it back to the park board. They won't be meeting again, well, they're meeting tomorrow, but they wouldn't be meeting again until, to be able to do some research until September. So, and so we could take this off the table now and come back later with an, with more information. Or if you just wanted to ban it, you could just change the code when we talk about it on the 5th. So whatever direction you want to give us, we're happy to send back to them.
I think it'd be helpful if we deferred to the park board to give us some information comparing what had been done in other jurisdictions, kind of updating the information that they'd given us before.
Sure.
If we wanted to put it in a state session, move it toward a legislative track, then with a more informed opinion, I think we'd be making a better decision.
Sure, happy to do that.
Mr. Branson.
Yeah, and I'd also like the park board to come and not with, just as they did before with their opinion of, we think you ought to do this, but with some data between what have they learned, what have they seen going on in the parks between 2014 and now that indicates that there ought to be, be a change. I mean, I haven't, I certainly haven't had any, any, any data or information, anecdotal or otherwise, from citizens that have raised that issue to me recently. But I, you know, what I would want to, you know, I would want to sort of take a look at the time between when we put the current policy in until now and what sort of data, whether it's factual or anecdotal, that they think warrants a change, if a change is what they're going to recommend.
See where you started? Mr. Simpson.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
And I'm responding to my colleague's comments. The data on smoking hasn't changed, Mike. It's still on a downward trend. I could make the argument that I made four years ago and say it should be allowed because it's going away. It's not the smoking. It's the vaping and the marijuana that will come. And I think we need to be out ahead of that. And that's when I get down to the image issue. I would not argue the smoking, Mary, because you'll lose. I would argue the marijuana and the vaping, and I think you have a much stronger case.
Okay.
If marijuana.
Okay. So the last item on here, and then I just, can I just ask one point of clarification? So you want me to pull this whole smoking piece now from this code?
No. This is an, this is an update.
A current update. So keep it updated now and then we'll look at the topic in general. Okay, perfect. We'll look at their work program and plug that in. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. So the last item that we have here is model aircraft and drones because although they're not really, it's not really a real word. It is a term that is used by everyone. And so rather than trying to correct folks, we're just, we thought we would add the drone into our definitions so that it's now official. And then in the current code, also the changes back when we did this in 2015, the FAA was, didn't have confirmed rules. They had some temporary rules and they're kind of hanging out there. And so since in 2018, they finalized their rules. And so we wanted to take a look and make sure that our code and our onsite rules were matching what the current conditions are. So you can see under the current code, we listed that, you know, you can't fly rockets or drones in public areas except for in designated areas. We treated it very much like the dog park and posted areas. And then we also added, if allowed in a designated area, that the FAA and the Academy of Model Aeronautics Association rules, that's really the governing body for that type of activity, must be followed. And then that way, we put those in there so that as those rules change, we don't have to keep updating our code, but we can update our signage, but don't have to update the code every time. And so just looking at our rule signs, just to show you, for an example, one is that, and this is for recreational use of drones and model aircraft, is that you are supposed to register your drone and you're supposed to have that registration and proof with you. It's a FAA requirement. And the, we had 500 feet. The rule is 400 feet according to the FAA, so we wanted to update that. And then you are not allowed to fly in controlled airspace. I get calls all the time from people that want to fly their drone on their property in DuPont because, or by American Lake, but not, not at American Lake Park because you can't do that, but because we're considered an airport, because McCord covers a large area. So I get called all the time because the rules are, for folks, they're always like, well, it's an airspace. Well, the airspace map shows this big of an area. And so I'm the airport manager for Lakewood, so I get the calls all the time. Yeah. Not all the time, but I'd say quite often, several times.
People were doing the recreational drone thing over the lakes. That's a known as a purpose of.
Well, they're properties of the state. That's not our, our city property. So technically, I'm.
There's, there's a map that in many cases looks like an upside-down, a series of upside-down wedding cakes.
Oh, yeah.
Where there's a designated landing space and then the area out from it, the farther out, the higher up you go, basically. It's not that simple. But there'd be blocked off areas like military training area and, and that is the controlled airspace.
Yeah. So if you're on private property and flying a drone, that's really a civil issue. It's not our issue. We really worry about the safety of our community and our citizens in our parks. And so that's why we have these rules here. And we wanted to make sure that they complied with the FAA rules because they have been approved. So you can see the code has just a minor change and then the rules will have various changes. Those are the underlined areas.
Are they funded? Can smoke, can boat?
I know. Taking all the fun out of everything.
Yeah, one cleanup item to consider, defining first-person view. It's a term of art that when you put it in a code without defining it, you can be left for interpretation.
Well, probably if you've got, I agree, we can, we'll add that to that or take a look at that. If you've gotten your license and you passed your test, you probably know what that means. So if you're really legally doing it, but there's probably a lot of folks out there that don't. So we'll clarify that. And that is it for park code updates.
Any further questions from Mrs. Dodsworth?
You guys are doing the Legacy Plan work right now?
We are. Yeah, I think we're bringing it to you in another couple of weeks as, for an update, just on where we're at. But we're in the middle of doing survey and information gathering. We're doing a lot of engagement activities. So we'll be at the farmer's market tomorrow. Woo! Stop by and put a dot on a map.
Pickleball courts is what I hear lately.
You know, Harry Todd, Harry Todd has some tennis courts that aren't used very much and that above-ground skate park isn't really, you know, it's 15 years old now. That might be a nice place to put a pickleball court. Just thinking. Fill out your survey. Let us know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. And if you do get suggestions like that, do direct people to the website because we will really take that information into consideration.
Supposed to be the new thing for the city.
But.
It's like more awards.
Oh.
It's all the returning, really like national stuff now.
Yeah, you know, it came from Tacoma, basically. Gordie Pfeifer and my daughters were in the East Coast and somebody introduced one of them to pick a wally, started laughing. This new game. Mr. City Manager, welcome back.
Tennis without running very far. Wait, wait, wait. This is good.
Didn't we have some really good innings in somebody's absence?
Short, efficient.
Sure, efficient, to the point.
With food.
With food.
Treats.
Well, when I get world peace, you'll get all that back. How's that?
I remember the treats.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the warm welcome back. Good to see all of you as well.
Those Bruins do it.
Oh, God, they're killing me, man. Got to come to play. Got to come to win. Got to come to win. I'm going to bounce around here and account a number of updates. On August 12th, Becky Newton and her team will be here to give you an update on all that is economic development. As a part of that, we'd like to incorporate a couple of items. One is the state legislature adopted a number of bills relating to housing, specifically affordable housing. So we'd like to give you a snapshot on that as well as some options and ideas on perhaps how they could be used here in Lakewood and primarily in partnership with other agencies. The other is, we're working on an economic analysis or an economic impact analysis of Western State Hospital in our community. And we're hoping to have at least a preliminary analysis, if not, you know, a comprehensive analysis of what that looks like. So I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up and a preview of that. Mayor Anderson received a request for the council to declare September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. This was a request that came through last year as well, and the council did consider that resolution and adopted it as part of our regular meeting in September. And so unless there's any objection from this body, we'd like to bring it back again either August or September. I understand, Mayor, that the council decided that they would like to participate in the Understand, Mayor, that the council decided that they would like to participate in the Tide Flat Subarea Plan Advisory Group. And I think having a staff member as an alternate, I understand it was part of your discussion, so we're looking at having Tiffany Spear serve in that role. But I don't know, has the council decided an elected official to serve as the primary, or is that something that you need a little bit more time?
We didn't get that part, except it can't be me.
Okay.
And probably shouldn't be Mr. Bulkey either. Because the county's one of the leads in it, and there's involvement of both the council and the executive level. Yeah.
Well, I'll just, if anybody has an interest, let me know. We have until, you know, end of August to determine this, but I would just ask that... Say again, Deputy?
Than when and where they are.
Yeah, they're once a month, and it'll be for like, it could be three or four years, once a month. That's, that's the commitment.
It probably won't be once a month on this committee, though, I don't think. This is an advisory committee to the advisory committee.
They're saying it's once a month.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a pretty significant commitment. So...
I'll think about it.
Okay.
It'll be downtown, close.
On, on Sunday, Mr. Buwer had one of our inspectors out and about, and they issued 11 stop work orders on Sunday. Apparently, one individual was so irate that our inspector was this close to calling the police department because of the confrontation. Unfortunately, that didn't have to happen. He also identified a business that had converted a basement into a residential unit. And how we found out about it was actually because the post office received a request for a new address, and they contacted the city. So we're able to follow up, follow up on that. Back to Western State Hospital, Mr. Holt, the CEO of Western State Hospital, has reached out to us and would like to provide a presentation to this body about what's going on in terms of the design and, you know, the forensics facility and the civil commitment facility. And so we'll look to schedule some time later this summer, early fall for that. One of the things that Mr. Buwer communicated to him while I was on vacation, and I will reiterate, is that it's our understanding that those design monies are not only for preliminary planning at the existing campus, but also to look at other alternative sites and location for Western State Hospital to go to. We're moving forward with a number of abatements. Actually, we have 13 in the queue, but the really, the big three are Denny's. There was a notice, notice of complaint hearing occurred last week. Also, the building formerly known as the QFC. And long story short, we're anticipating an appeal, but it could be by November, one way or the other. That building is either going to be renovated to buildings, to current building standards, or will be abated, most likely the latter, the latter option. And then the other is, unfortunately, Car One Village seems to be, they were unproven, but now they're going the other way. And so we are moving forward with the abatement process on, on that. We...
What will that indicate? I don't know.
So it will require first and foremost for us to relocate them, and we'll have to pay for that relocation. And then we'll just go through the regular process as we do with any other, any, any other property. Currently, we have $400,000 in our abatement account, which is a pretty sizable amount of money. So to cover Car One Village and our existing abatements that are currently in the queue, with the exception of the QFC property, is we're probably okay. However, the QFC abatement, if we end up having to do it, and if the current property owner decides not to do it, it's about, it's over $1 million. And so it is likely we will have to come back to you for a budget adjustment on that to accommodate that. However, please know that we get that back, plus interest as prescribed by state law, within at least three years. So, but, you know, of course, one of the things that we communicate to property owners, it's, it behooves them to do it themselves, because they can do it at a much lower cost than what the city does. And of course, then they don't have the carrying cost as they look out into the future. We also were notified, I think this came from Councilmember Bulkey, there was a property on Sapphire that seems to be some kind of a boarding house, and we're not quite sure what's going on there. Mr. Buwer is requesting information from the current owners. It's just getting zero cooperation. It could be there's squatters going on on that in there. But long story short, we're not going to let it go.
I think at one time, it was, because I used to walk by there a lot, it might have been a foreclosure of some sort. And then, then it kind of got fixed up, and then there was a rental company. And the rental company was like out of Atlanta, Georgia or something. So I'm just not following. And now there's all these cars there.
So we're trying to figure out what's going on there.
Thank you.
Speaking of adult family homes, where Bryn Grimley, our communications manager, was contacted by the TNT, and they want to do a story on adult family homes in Lakewood. So he may be requested to, you know, provide some comments or feedback on that. So just to give you, give you a heads up on, 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 on that. Some, some good news, some up and comers within our organization, actually, three women. Our planning manager, Courtney Brunel, our senior policy analyst, Shannon Kelly Fong, and our communications manager, Bryn Grimley, have been accepted to the Second Northwest Women's Leadership Academy, which is put on by the Washington City County Managers Association, of which a number of us belong to. And the first class actually just ended. It's a program that kicks off in September and goes through June. One of our previous employees, Tori Brazidis, was a graduate of the first inaugural class, which again, just graduated in, in June. But these three were selected for the next class of 32 from over 60 applicants statewide, so a very positive reflection on them as individuals, and of course, our organization. And the purpose of, of, of the academy is to, you know, encourage women to move up in organizations and take advantage of, you know, leadership opportunities, whether it's as a department director, or as an assistant city manager, or a city manager in positions, positions like that. So it's a fairly robust program. They get together about one day a month between September and June, and talk about a number of issues specific to local government. But did want to extend our congratulations to those three folks. On the public work side, a lot of activity going out there. I just wanted to draw your attention. You're going to see some pavement patching occurring out there, specifically over in the Lake City neighborhood in advance of the chip seal that's going to occur later on this summer. And also some patching on Inilockin Drive on the west side of the bridge. That's probably going to get done, should be done this week or next week. But in any event, a lot happening there. Likewise, around Lake Louise Drive, and also, I think there's a little bit of patching over in the Oak Brook area on, 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 on Zircon. Speaking of the chip seal, that contract was also let earlier this year, and that's expected to get underway the latter part of June and into early August. And that's primarily over in the area of Lake City, south of Washington, Washington Boulevard. The 123rd Street Project, the storm drainage is complete, the water main is completed, so all the underground stuff is done. And they're now grading the site and beginning to put in curb and, and gutters. So again, that project is coming along quite nicely. Veterans Drive, the community outreach, is currently underway. We have a standalone webpage requesting project input that went live last week, and will close the end of this month on July 28th. And then likewise, we'll have an update on all of that community input as part of your study session on August, August, August 12th. Onyx Drive, that project is moving forward, and right now, our Public Works Engineering Department is sending out notifications to property owners regarding the current survey that's underway, as well as asking for right of entry for the surveys to, for the surveys to enter their property to tie into, to the project. So again, a lot, lot happening out there. Before I went on vacation, myself, Mr. Buwer, and Ms. Kelly Fong met with Ron Pate from Wash Dot Rail. He's the CEO of that organization, to talk about the follow-up on the NTSB recommendations and findings that was released in, in, in June. Overall, the meeting, it went very, very well. I was very pleased with the meeting. As a part of that, he asked what further mitigation measures that the city is, is requesting. And so we're kind of like, really, Ron, we've been down this road. And he said, no, no. What is it? And I said, okay, three things. Number one, we would request that you, that Wash Dot, request as part of the governor's supplemental budget, the funding needed to perform the train stop feasibility study. Rather than us having to go after it, you go after it. And we subsequently followed up with all the letters of recommendations that we had received last time, including from Sound Transit. And so he was, he was really appreciative of that. So he said he would get, he would run that up his chain of command, and he would get back to us on that. We did explain to him that if that's something that would happen, I said, quite frankly, that would go a long, long way here in Lakewood. And he said, no, I understand. I understand. The second thing that we asked for was, can you just slow down the trains? Can you just slow them down? Do they really have to go 79 miles an hour? Can they go the same speed as Amtrak? And he said, and he suggested that we reach out to Sound Transit, because apparently Sound Transit is the agency that controls that. So myself and the Sound Transit CEO have been playing phone tag on that. We haven't quite yet connected. So Mr. Pate did provide some good advice to us, which is, you know, ask Sound Transit to reduce the train speed, at least on an interim basis, while the construction is going on of North Thorne Lane and Berkeley Interchanges, because it's a construction zone. So let's try it out, you know, run to that 40 or 50 miles an hour, and let's see, let's see what happens. And then the third was just grade separation, similar to what's happening at Thorne Lane and Berkeley and other areas and, you know.
So why does Sound Transit control the, if, you know, the, the tiers of ownership and control are obviously confusing, but if, if Wash Dot Rail runs a train by contracting with Amtrak to run the train, who hires a Burlington Northern engineer to drive the train?
And they own the trains. Wash Dot owns the trains.
And they own the trains. Why does Sound Transit purportedly control the speed?
I don't have...
Because they aren't, they aren't paying for it. They aren't hiring anybody. They aren't contracting it. They're leasing their tracks to the state.
In addition to the federal money, do you think?
I, I will speculate, because Sound Transit is the owner of the rail line. So that is a question that...
Well, they're the owner of the tracks.
That's correct. That's my, I'm purely speculating there. I'm just purely speculating.
Yeah, I would guess that Sound Transit could set a speed limit on their track. But I don't understand, just like, as long as I don't go with a speed limit, I can go slower.
I think that's what, that's, that's, that's why it sounds, that's, it sounds like a Dodge.
So, so this gets back to the proverbial question that we ask on a regular basis, which is, who's in charge? And the answer, I'll paraphrase, it depends. But at the end of the day, in my opinion, somebody's supposed to be in charge. But I've never been able to get a, get any answer on that. So, but overall, I was very pleased with the discussion and the dialogue, and I'm cautiously optimistic that some positive results will come from this. So we'll keep council appraised of this. Something that just happened a couple of weeks ago, and then there was another court ruling, is that the courts have ruled that bear skin is not free speech, and this relates to bikini barista stands, as it relates to a case out of, out of Everett. Earlier this week, or no, last week, late last week, the U.S. Ninth Circuit Court found that baristas were unlikely to win a First Amendment argument, that their right to free expression was violated by the Everett ordinance regulating dress. It's still in the, they could still appeal, so it's in the appeal process. It's actually been kicked back to the U.S. District Court in Seattle, so it's not finalized yet. But given that we have in the past had complaints regarding a couple of our stands, bikini barista stands here in Lakewood, and I think there's seven of them, I think there's seven of them. And, but it's only been a couple that we've really had some issues with. What I'd like to do, unless the mayor and the council, unless you have any objection, I'd like to have the legal department just kind of look at this and maybe draft what an ordinance could look like. And then we'll follow and monitor what's happening with every case. And then once it is finalized, if the council's interested, we can certainly bring something back to you for your review and consideration. The purpose of doing this is twofold. One is, well, the purpose of, if this passes the legal muster, at the end of the day, the purpose of implementing a similar ordinance that exists in Everett is twofold. One is to address the complaints that we periodically get. But I think, secondly, and somebody said it here earlier in the meeting, it's an image issue for the city of Lakewood. We have seven of them, you know?
You sold one.
You and I, yeah.
I just found out.
So, so, but again, unless there's any objection, I'd at least like to do the staff work on it.
And there have been incidents where other things were being sold.
No, no, Mayor, that's not happening. No. I'm shocked.
Yeah, we really have six or seven of them. I can only think of one or two.
We do. We have, what are the ones that look, the red and white ones? The name brand. There's like four of those, and then there's one on part of a, then there's one on Custer, and then there's one as part of a gas station. And there's one, yeah, so it's, right?
There's one across the wall.
Is it that ladybug thing?
Ladybug, that's it. So there's four ladybugs. There's four ladybugs. There's one on Custer, and then there's one over by Buc-Ee's. That's six. I'm missing...
One across the wall. Point of order, why don't you guys know? It's like, I have no clue. Just ask.
I'm pleading the fifth.
That didn't work for Wendell Brown.
No, it didn't. But they advertise it. I can answer your question. If they're painted pink, you got one. And there's a reason why they have the color scheme that they have.
If they're pink.
That one over there in Buc-Ee's, I mean, it just, it just screams.
Okay, just learn, just learn something new.
I'm a Starbucks guy.
But again, but again, unless it's a mayor, unless there's any objection. All right, not seeing any. Let's see, on, on Wednesday at noon over at Fort Silicon Park, we're going to be having our second quarter employee recognition event. And actually, families are welcome, and of course, Mayor and the council. So we're going to have lunch at noon. It's pulled pork. I think a couple of our parks employees are putting on the spread. And then we're going to have awards at 1:00. And then we're going to have some games and prizes at 2:00 p.m., a little fellowship, hula hoop competition, pitch and putt, and some cornhole tournament. So feel free to come on by and participate in the activities. Also, that same day, we're going to have Bring Your Child to Work Day. So, so if you see some little people running around here, either here or over at Fort Silicon Park, that's who they, who they are. From a business standpoint, next Thursday, this Thursday, July, no, next, this Thursday, yeah, July 25th, we'll have our second open house on the Legacy Plant over at the Lakewood Library. Also, that same evening, we'll have the Summer Concert Series, a continuation of that. And that event will include the recognition of the transfer of ownership of Fort Silicon Park to the city of Lakewood. And Mayor, we'll have, hopefully, we'll have the three legislators this Thursday evening.
What day is it?
This 25th, 25th. Recognizing the 28th district, so Senator O'Ban, former Representative Dick Murray, and Representative Christine Kilduff for their work in getting that budget proviso a couple of years ago.
That's...
It should be on your calendar.
Seven o'clock.
Seven, 7:30. That's correct.
7:30 is, well...
7:30.
When's the concert start?
I think the concert starts at 7:00, 7:30. So I, I think it's...
Seven, I think.
Seven, seven. Be there at 7:00. That's correct.
So which, which Beatles song best matches the event, the recognition?
Long, long winding road.
It's good. So with that...
Questions for the city manager? Mr. Bransfitter?
The North Lakewood Neighborhood Association meets tomorrow evening. Is there someone going to be there with something about the Onyx Drive?
I don't know. I know that I'm actually giving a state-of-the-city presentation, so I'll be there. So I know I'll be talking about Onyx.
Okay. Not that you're uninteresting, but they'll probably be more interested in Onyx Drive.
Good, 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 good to be back, Councilmember Bransfitter. Appreciate it, once again, the Walmart. I'll check. I think, I think Mr. Ott was expected to attend, but I'll, I'll check on it.
Okay, okay. That, that works. Good.
I did have a comment regarding the Veterans Drive. I'm sure I'm not the only one who's noticed this, but I was, I was coming out of our favorite golf course with the Lakewood address. It isn't in Lakewood. Coming out of the V Hospital on Sunday. It isn't in Lakewood, come out of the VA Hospital on Sunday. And the boat parking was backed up to, almost literally to the gate of the VA Hospital, maybe hundred and fifty, two hundred feet back on both sides of the road. There were so many boats, you know, and of course, the, the launch was full, and somebody was getting towed for not permitting, getting permitted or something. There was police car and a tow truck down there. But, you know, it's, I think we really need to be careful when we, we look at that, because we, there could be some unintended consequences if that parking is disrupted to a great extent.
So we have received quite a bit of feedback on, on, on that specific issue as part of.
Yeah, because there are going to be varying opinions on it. I don't want them parked in front of my house anymore, but it's the only, you know, it's the main interest to the lake for.
Do you want the Veterans Drive improvements?
Yeah.
That begs the question about trying to do something to improve the one over at Camp Murray.
Yeah, kind of creating a different access, which is.
That's right.
Maybe if you're from, if you're not from Lakewood, you have to go over to the one at Camp Murray or something.
And we're meeting, and actually regarding that whole issue, including the annexation of Camp Murray, our team is meeting with their team, I think it's August 5th or 6th, it's a Thursday, I think it's a Friday.
It's the AG, yeah. I think that's what the AG is.
General, General Doherty is still in charge. Oh, yeah, General, Major General George Doherty, Brett Doherty.
Yeah, same way.
Yeah. He has, yeah, appointed by the governor. Cabinet position.
Ms. Bransfitter?
Yeah, I, I, I think on, on Veterans Drive, you know, I think that needs to be the project that we draw the line on about the mailboxes and sidewalks. You know, we either need to have mailboxes in a planter strip, or we need to have people de-dust them right away so the sidewalks can go around their mailbox, or we need to insist that collective groups of mailboxes be, be installed in, in places and work to do that. You know, that we've, we've done too many projects that look fine except for that. You know, and, and, and particularly that, and, and it really does all of that. And, and it, and it's, you know, the combination of that and of, you know, we, we, we've redone an overlay on Custer Road, and we did it without sidewalks, and it looks rural.
Correct, and it's, you gravel.
You know, you know, in, in, in other words, yeah, it's, it's, the, the road surface is, is better, but the, the street state is in the, in the, in the, in the, in the wrong direction in terms of, of, of doing that. And we, so I'm, I'm hoping that we get to our, our retreat, and we're supposed to do two retreats, but we haven't done one yet, but that, that, where there's one, it's around non-motorized transportation as an element, where we can really sort of, sort of say, you know, it's, it's, it's fine to go out to the community and give people what they want, but we need to have some parameters, particularly around sidewalks and things, things like that. And, you know, to get an extra three hundred feet of road at the expense of, of, of a sidewalk, it's, it's better to have three hundred feet less with, and have sidewalks. And I have no idea whether those numbers mean anything, but they're just numbers.
All right. We'll move to council comments, Ms. Moss.
Just part of my comments, not a question of, but I had, was approached by a Scott Mills, and I know we passed an ordinance in November in reference to new businesses coming in and how we are projecting the traffic cost. And he's, he's.
Traffic mitigation fee.
Yeah, he's a little bit concerned with the amount of money that he's been asked to pay upfront, which was like twenty-seven thousand dollars. And he wasn't, he wasn't, he was just saying, is there anything, is that anything that we can do about it? But he approached me, I'm sorry I missed your call today, I would have talked to you about it. But, I mean, it's in the ordinance.
That's correct.
So his question was, he would love to be able to say that, yes, he's going to have that kind of traffic effect. But look, in his location, he doesn't see that happening, so.
What's his business?
It's the Rush Bowl, it's a smoothie, and it's going in over off of Hundred and, oh, yeah, on Hundred Street, by Rite Aid, someplace in that area. And I. It's, it's a smoothie. A healthy smoothie.
A smoothie, which you pay for twenty-seven grand.
Yeah, so those mitigation fees are part of the subarea planned, planned action ordinance that this body adopted last fall. And I know this came up when I was gone, and so I've asked Mr. Brewer to prepare an executive summary of how this is working, as well as, you know, the businesses that have paid, as well as some businesses who haven't, because if you, if, if there was an existing business there, they get a credit. And the purpose of that funding is to implement your subarea plan. So it's not about the transportation projects that currently exist or the infrastructure, it's about the future improvements that you have identified. That total, I think, what is it, forty-six million dollars in current dollars? And the policy direction that you set was that new businesses and activities that come into the community will pay fifty percent of that, and the city will pay fifty percent. And so that twenty-seven thousand dollars that that business is paying will be their fair share for the new traffic that their, that their business is bringing into the downtown.
So they have to pay that upfront?
That's correct. So there's a couple of things you can do, there's really two options. One is that you can, you know, change your policy and have the city pay more, which means then we have to go out and raise taxes or get more money elsewhere to make those improvements at a, at a, at a later date. Or you can do away with the mitigation fees and have the city pay for it all, and then just go back to kind of the old way, the SEPA process of doing it, which in some instances will probably cost property owners more. Matter of fact, you know, there's been a number of new businesses who have come in, and when they find out that they, they, you know, we have a planned action ordinance, and we have the mitigation fees in place, they actually, they love it, because they know that they don't have to incur all these other costs, that they can just pay that fee and then they're done.
So maybe that's, maybe that could be explained to him so that he would.
I'm sure it has been, if he's been in contact with our, we spend a lot of time with, with, with people on this.
So there are other fees that he could be having to pay?
That's, that's, if not for this ordinance, and that's the beneficial, that's the benefit of having a planned action ordinance. It makes it create certainty for everybody, as well as allow, you know, provides them much as certainty in terms of cost, but also moves their projects through a whole lot quicker.
Okay, all right, well, I can, I'll have a conversation with him and see.
You know, while they're, while everything you said is correct, that it gets back to that, what the fair share is, and I think maybe at some point we'll want to know, get a comparison, especially on people who question it. What would the impact be without, what is the impact? Because the fact that we sent a formula that can be calculated with mathematical certainty and is applied equally doesn't mean that it's the right formula in every instance. Whether there have to be classes for different elements or whatever. I, I always suspected as we passed it that we might not get it right on the first pass. Mr. Bransfitter?
I, I think that, I think that having a formula that can be applied is really important. I think it's a key element of, you know, it was something that we looked at really closely and did it. So it's a key element of actually making the downtown plan come to fruition. But I, I also agree that it's, the, the formula that there maybe doesn't need to be only one formula. There may be a couple of, of options. You know, one of the things that came to light was, is, is, could the formula account for some credit for someone filling a vacant existing building as opposed to, is that have to be the same as for someone who's building a, a new building or doing, or starting a business with significant tenant improvement? But the, the, so I, so I think it warrants us sort of discussing and thinking about, brainstorming about where we'd like to go with that, but being resolved to retain it. I think the one thing that we don't want to do is we don't want each individual business that gets a bill to come back to the city staff and want to renegotiate it. You know, and we end up starting to negotiate these individually, and then we start having formulas that aren't being applied equally to do that. So, you know, I, but the planned action ordinance called for that fee to be redo, renewed or updated every year when we do the new fee schedule, because it's a part of that fee schedule. And I, yeah, so I think that before that next thing over there, we should maybe, if we get some, some impact, because I'm kind of interested in what we are collecting and being able to go and do that and bring those things. And then brainstorming, is there something we want to do with the fee schedule with respect to having more than just one formula? I mean, we at least have got a solid reference to determine the number of trips that a type of business is expected to create. I mean, that's a, that, that, that's a research data-driven publication. As opposed to a business owner saying, oh, I, I can't see where, there's going to be ninety cars coming through here a day, you know, and he wishes, you know, that it be a hundred and ninety to, to be able to go and, go and do that. But it's, I think, I think it's a topic we got to keep discussing with and get, get some input from staff, but it's, 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 tie it to the next update of the fee schedule rather than reacting to an individual person's situation right now. I particularly would like to incentivize the, we, getting people to occupy existing vacant spaces in buildings of, up to a certain size. You know, you know, the, the, the small spaces being occupied by small businesses. You know, I, I'm, not, not somebody that would want to apply that kind of formula to the QFC building.
Mr. Wilkie? So there's, and, and I think the city manager made reference, the, it does get complicated, because you've got several sides to the issue. Once you start fiddling with the revenue side, you have to change the expense side. So if we fiddle with the revenue side, we have to start taking projects off. Or, or, as the city manager said, or, or taking it. The other, the other thing is, is if it's anything like an impact fee, and this is not an impact fee, and we don't call it an impact fee, it has to be justified, you know, you have to have, if it's based on trips or anything, if you're producing, your business is going to produce fifty new trips a day, and mine's going to produce fifty new trips a day, we've pretty much got to get paid, a, a, a trip is a trip is a trip. It's not, we can't say, well, his trips are different because he's in an existing building, and he built a new building, so his trips are different. I, I, I mean, I, I just, I don't know that you want to go there, and I, I don't know that it would be legal. I, I think this is also consequence of perhaps maybe we made, because it sounds like it's on the fringes that we're getting these complaints on a hundred, that the thing was just too big, that, you know, that's, that's, you know, because if we want redevelopment of the Colonial Plaza, should that have been in the downtown plan? I mean, we, we extended it way down Gravely Lake, we went way, we went, you know, it covers quite a bit of area, and staff warned us, like, yeah, be careful here. And we've kind of now, I think, been bit by, by that, because if this guy's on a hundred, then I don't know where the other guy was when he, he made his complaint, because he didn't identify an address. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one follow-on question to what I've heard Mike and Paul say. When a new business comes to the city of Lakewood, is everything like this planned action ordinance and the mitigation fee, is this all explained to them prior to?
Absolutely, council members, part of the pre-application process. And again, it's, and again, businesses who are coming into the city, particularly from elsewhere, they are very pleased that we have something like this, because this is something that others don't have.
And that gets to my point. Then is it not the responsibility on them to act according to what they hear from city staff before they know they're going to get this built?
He was not, he was just shocked at the price, at the dollar amount. I don't think he, he's going forward, but.
But my, my point is, is that we start moving figures around. There's going to be, I think, a disruption that we do not need with our budget, because we are telling people upfront, this is how we set the table. And you know this going in, it's that old Latin phrase, caveat emptor. Consumer beware. You've been made aware. The, the responsibility, I think, now rests with that individual. And I think waiting to see what this does in two years is a very good idea, because I'm, how many, another question, another way to look at this is, how many businesses have come into the, the city under this new? Quite a few. So I'm, I'm not so sure we need to go through an entire realigning of the train here, so to speak, when you've got far more people who are satisfied with this.
He, he's excited to be in Lakewood, he wants to be in Lakewood, so he's not.
I'd just like to add, the two years, we're about a year out, so, because we're, you know. Also like to point out that the mitigation fees are based on trips. It's not whether a building is new or old. For example, an existing building, if there was a use in there, you get a credit for that if you can show the trips that, you know, are coming, that, that had previously been coming out of that vacant space. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter if it's a new building or an old building or renovated building, it's dependent upon specifically the number of traffic trips that are, that are coming from that, from that business.
It was, he was obviously, that was explained to him because he did mention trips.
But we'll have a, an update here in the near future for you, that, that's something we can, we'll, we'll do for you.
And the other question I have was on the business license, that more complaints coming on business license. Do we, do we have a checklist now for the businesses?
For, for the business license? Well, we're now required under state law to, for businesses to register through the Department of Revenue, through the, their business licensing system. As a matter of fact, we have an update for you coming as part of your next meeting, August 5th, as a matter of fact.
Okay, and the other question I have was, are all of our commission positions filled?
I think we have a couple of vacancies right now, we just had another retirement, so.
All right, that was all I had to share. But the, the other thing that I wanted for my comments was that although I've missed a lot of the sister city events that happen in the city, I really enjoyed last weekend at Tacoma Golf and Country Club. I was fortunate enough to sit with a gentleman that could speak English, so we had a good conversation. Yeah, so that's all I have.
Ms. Bransfitter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, you know, is, I, I think the, the collection of sister cities events and, and our, and our opportunities to, to interact with the visitors from South Korea, Okinawa, and the Philippines, actually went right, went right well. I think we, we, we came across as hospitable, okay? And, and I think there was interest on both sides of learning from each other. So I was pleased with how that went, and the feedback that I got, particularly from the delegation from South Korea, is that they, they were very happy with their visit and how that was. And everybody spoke about looking forward to greater frequency than, than we've had in the past. I plan to go to the North Lakewood Neighborhood Association meeting tomorrow. And the, and the, on the, on the 25th, although we've got a number of things going on, there, there, there is. there, there is a legacy plan open house meeting at the, at the library at five, so I'm going to try to get to that before wandering over to the concert to be able to go and look to do that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bulkey?
I think I'm going to go to North Lakewood tomorrow. I think last month we ran into the, because of the holiday, we ran into, or May, I think we ran into, where we had at the night, we had our meeting the night of that, so it should be pretty good. And I'll be interested to hear what the city manager has to say about all the great things going on in town.
Ms. Barth? Noted.
I did hear some really good things about all of the festivities that I did miss, with the sister cities and the dinners and whatnot. I understand that everybody was having a really good time. So interestingly enough today, on Lakewood Drive, I was coming down from Silicon Boulevard towards Second Center. And you know how right by the Esplan they have the sidewalks? There's a guy cruising down the sidewalk on his, in his wheelchair, and he gets to where there's no sidewalk, and he goes, oh, no.
In the later.
In, not in front of me, but I'm like six cars back, right in front of traffic.
Oh, my gosh.
People skidding sideways, somebody jumped out of her car, and I'm watching this. It's, seriously, so just, just, interesting.
Yikes.
It is interesting, but I'm glad for that. Thanks for holding on so long.
Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, I just want to piggyback on what Mary was talking about concerning licensing. I'm looking forward to the discussion on the fifth of August, because I've heard just a little bit of rumbling from some of the business owners about the process not being as easy to use as they first thought. I've also heard a few gripes about the foliage. The, right away, the planting, some of the areas along Hipkins Road, there are bushes, and some of that's become weedy and overgrown, and I've heard a few complaints about that. On a brighter note, I thoroughly enjoyed the dinner last Tuesday evening, I thought that was very nice. Ms. Moss was at her table, and of course she allowed to everybody that she hasn't had a headache in fifty years, to which I said, she gave them to me. So I just thought I'd pass that on, if you have a headache, you know, to look at. And then the other thing I, I know was, was we had a meeting here that Tuesday morning with our colleagues from our sister city, and I believe we're going to have an M O A come before this body concerning our, our, our relationship, and I'm looking forward to that, because I, I had an idea that I'd like to see if we can incorporate into that, which is to include the Clover Park Technical College as one of the two educational institutions in the city. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Whalen?
Just one comment, other than the event with the sister cities, I thought was well done. We've got the opportunity to review the process with Perry Howard, who's the selected artist, at least for that contract, and that is set for Wednesday, the thirty-first, if you can make it, four thirty to six. Yes, here in City Hall somewhere, it's either going to be in the mayor's room or somewhere she can put stuff on a projector. So if you can make it, great, and the more the merrier, that way we get this thing, you know, on the path toward finality.
Regarding median maintenance, kind of a related issue, you notice that C V S landscaping company seems to think that their responsibility ends at the sidewalk and doesn't include the planters strip outside. Okay. So I'm sure they can read, realign their landscaping company. To enjoy the sister cities, let me guess, Tuesday farewell for Gem Hay. I would note that you folks might get hit up for a contribution when my club bill comes. There was, there was, there was confusion regarding what was being hosted and what wasn't. Mr. Whalen and I made a, an executive decision that was totally beyond our authority, but will be enforced, that if necessary, the city council would chip in and buy the drinks for our visitors.
They were modest, they were pretty modest drinkers.
Yeah, it was, it was like one round for folks. And the only other glitch, this has been organized and before, more complicated than before, was leaving council member Soro from the Philippines at the dock at American Lake Park, which is embarrassing. I have, he, he went to the restroom, and the people providing the transportation, I guess, had never run a field trip or had four daughters like I did, and so you always count how many go in and out of the vehicle, and they figured he was with somebody else. L P D found him wandering down Veterans Drive. He later that day, yeah, I was introducing him at Summerfest, and he wasn't there. The other, all the other delegates were there. So he's going to get a buy-look-by-out box from me and, and with some gifts, and he had lunch later with retired Brigadier General Oscar Hillman, and he was in good spirits and laughing about it, so.
The thing he didn't get called in is that vagrant wandering down.
Yeah. He hadn't taken a cellphone with him, so he had no way to contact anybody. I've been asked to meet with Dr. Chen of the Health Department, that's purportedly to talk about what the Health Department could do for Lakewood. From what I hear from his outreach, it's kind of trying to advance his agenda. I have requested, and city managers and company are going to try to facilitate a site visit as part of that meeting, either to Car One Village or the apartment complex where they pump raw sewage on the ground. To talk about. Talk about core functions. Yeah, there's a, this is, yeah, my wife was kind of upset, this, this, it's the health, her, her comment was, is the Health Department so bad that a tenant has to call the mayor? I was out of town, a tenant has to call the mayor because people are pumping raw sewage on the ground. And evidently, there was a failed system in Woodbrook, and the owner had done this more than once, and an individual who lives there caught it on video and.
Intentional, not accidental?
No, they have failed system, and they're pumping it out, just pumping it in a vacant lot next door. So it's going to be a major problem to clean up, but, you know, they. Yeah, it's going to, there's going to be a lot of ramifications, it's going to be interesting to see, because they, they, apparently, I looked at septic tanks for that, that complex is actually duplexes and fourplexes that are all in separate parcels. And they patchwork together a fix of the various septics, some of which were broken about a dozen years ago when they were, when the units were purchased. And some of the septic tanks at that time had holes in the side, and part of the drain fields had been paved over and.
Is this kind of an availability fee, or is he beyond?
Oh, I think he's close enough, I mean, but, so this is new. So, but I'm personally concerned about their deviation from core functions into policymaking, the way they allocate their assets, like checking water at swimming beaches and inspecting failed sewer systems are not a priority, although those are functions that are delegated to them exclusively by the state, so. Talked about Veterans Drive, went to the change of command on Friday. Nicole Lucas retired, and the new Garrison Commander is Colonel Sky Duncan, who has been here on a number of occasions before. He is a, what do you call your radio guys?
Signal band?
Signals, he's signals, yeah. But he's glad to be back. And I had, I didn't get to, I didn't get to meet him, I didn't stand in line, that line, because I had the opportunity to talk with Brenda McCullough, who actually conducted the ceremony, which is unusual. She's an S E S, who I think is the senior civilian at M COM in San Antonio. And she is someone who I think I had met in passage and that had been pointed out to me as somebody who might be in the position to break log jams with respect to some things. So I thought that was worthwhile, talking to her. And I did look up the Beatles songs while we were sitting here, and I think that for our legislators, we should have it twofold, we should start out with, "You Never Gave Me Your Money," and then "Glad All Over." Yeah, there we go, there we go. That's a better one. So, is there anything else to come before the council? Given the hour, what, what? We're pooped, but maybe a ten-minute executive session to chart course on. I don't know that we function too well at eleven o'clock at night. So we, the council recess into executive session for approximately ten minutes pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one ten-one to review the performance of a public employee. Council will come back, only to adjourn, will not take any action after this executive session. We're in recess.